...to receive presentations from staff regarding the City of Kingman fiscal year 2018 and 2019 operating and capital budget. Before we get started, I just want to remind everyone that we need to have the microphones on so that we can have a clear recording. If you don't mind, thank you. Are you going to start?
I am.
Okay.
Waiting for everybody to get their mics on and be ready to go. And allow me to welcome Ron to the table. It's one of those opportunities that don't come along very often where one person gets to do all the work on the budget and the other person gets to do all the work implementing the budget. And so it's grateful that Ron was able to be with us today and tomorrow as well. As you know, I'd like to start out with a couple of thoughts. Here are two. Lyndon Johnson, when he was president, said yesterday is not ours to recover, but tomorrow is ours to win or lose. And that ties nicely with one of my favorite quotes about budgets, which is that they reflect our plans and priorities for the future. So this is really a planning session, if you will, here to the future. And hopefully June, when the budget's adopted, there's a clear path forward on what the City of Kingman is going to be doing over the next 12 months. Today, we're going to identify budget highlights and key concepts, review the policies and service priorities that were used to develop the 18-19 recommendations, highlight the 18-19 budget recommendations for each operating division, and present the 18-19 capital improvements projects. We're not going to get all of that done today, but that's the four things that are going to happen today and tomorrow. For those of you who remember that there are time periods involved with the adoption of the budget, the budget went out last week on the third. We start today, continue tomorrow, and then based on your feedback, staff will amend the recommended budget as necessary so that there's a tentative adoption on your first meeting in June and a final adoption on your second meeting in June. You might remember this from our workshop in January, budgets actually, several things all wrapped up into one document. The policy document, which is why it's really important, our view to start with feedback from the council about what policies you want the budget to reflect. It's obviously a management tool that gives the city manager pretty clear guidance about what should and should not be happening over the next 12 months. Traditionally a financial control device, everybody realizes, especially in government. And the part that I think has got a lot of opportunity here, and I look forward to what Ron is able to do next year or the year after, is his communication with a lot of people, to give them all where money's going and what limits have been put on that spending. The highlights that I would draw to your attention are that general fund budgeted revenues are up 4.5 percent. The interesting part about that is that's budget to budget. If you look at it between where we think we're going to finish this fiscal year to the same number for 2018-19, that increase is only 2.75 percent. So we're not being nearly as aggressive in the revenue side as you might think. We're just trying to base the revenue estimate for next fiscal year on a more realistic understanding of where we think this fiscal year's going to be. The next one is something I think all of you have come to understand and is a part of our financial reality, and that's 84 percent of the general fund revenues come from TPT and state share revenues. That's a huge percentage. When Ron and I were learning about this business, they told us to have a diverse revenue base. That doesn't look like 84 percent from two sources. One of which is dependent on the attitude of the state legislature. So that's something that everybody should pay attention to, whether they're on the city council, the city staff, the district. Third is that all construction sales tax revenues have been moved from the general fund to the capital fund. The day that I met the seven of you in this room, I said that if I was asked about the budget, it looked to me like we were using the construction sales tax for the operating budget, and that if I were going to be your interim city manager, I would do what I could to migrate those dollars from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. I'm pleased to share with you that we were able to get all of those construction sales tax dollars transferred to the capital fund. So that's about $800,000. Next is that the general fund expenditures are up 2.7 percent of 29.378-910. 59.6 percent of that is police and fire. And when people ask why that is, it's because in every city budget I've seen, and I suspect that Ron's seen, police and fire is under 50 to 60 percent. And so it's A, very typical. B is if you think about the salary levels, the pension requirements, the numbers of people that it takes to have a 24/7 operation, that's how you get the 59.6. The next one, it's actually probably the only time in my career of Ron's that I see a recommendation for 17.75 positions. I suspect that two of us combined over the last 20 years haven't recommended 17.75 positions. The biggest, we're going to go through that, but the biggest reason for that is that this budget reflects the airport as a city service. And then it makes recommendations for roof maintenance in our park and recreation areas. So you take those two together and you have the majority of it. Lastly, that the budget recommendations are consistent with the city council priorities identified at your January 9, 2018 workshop. For those of you who wondered if we were ever going to see those feedback statements again, the answer, yep, we are and coming up. This is what the 19 budget looks like on a pie chart from the presentation that so far it should be what you would expect it to be, which is dominated by sales tax and state shared revenues. That's the blue that's over half and whatever that reddish color is that the staff chose to use for the state shared revenue. This is general fund expenditures, and as you can tell, that's fire and police at the bottom. And then everybody else gets some piece of the general fund, but the majority of it is police. This is a piece of information that's new, I think, from last year's budget. What we tried to do is give you a summary of the general fund by division or department, if you will, and break it out into categories, personnel, supplies, internal services, capital outlay, to get to it fully. And then for reference, we show that 17-18 and in your budget document, this same presentation for the current fiscal year is represented. So if you want to kind of look and see what the differences are, you're able to do that. This is a bar chart we put in to let you know that in 2018-19, the numbers are up, but as a percent of the general fund expenditures, PSPR's contributions have stayed even at 11.2. You can also tell that's the first time that's happened in a while. And you may remember that earlier this year, I gave a presentation on PRSPF and talked about taking the budgeted amount after adoption and having finance write a check for that amount as one of the ways to help keep this number flat in the out years. So that's PSPRs. I said we talked a little bit more about the new positions. Most of the increase comes from adding the airport, there's seven, public safety, four, two in police, two in fire, and park and golf course maintenance of 3.75. Then there's an equipment operator, A, added to the streets division, a GIS tech two, so that we can increase the rate of conversions of our files to GIS for engineering, and a water service worker, which is actually a meter reader in water, has been added so we can do a better job of having our meter data put into the records so that it goes in. So that's where the positions come from.
One question, how did the airport was seven and a half?
It was seven and a half until we discovered in the last week that that person is indeed a hard time person and doesn't rise to the 0.5 part of it. So we treat, there's money in there for it, but it's not counted as a position. So the recommendations that we're about to review today come from city council survey results that we discussed in this room on the 9th of January. And you'll remember from that, as we said, streets, park, administration, capital improvements, and economic development all needed attention. But public safety is strong, and we just want to continue making incremental improvements in those areas. And so that's the rating sheet, which you remember seeing in January. On a 10 scale, fire was a 9.2, the court was a 9.1, police, 8.7, and went down to economic development, the two, capital improvements, the 3.1, streets at a 4.1. We took that information and then looked at it in terms of the difference between where you would like service to be. What we call the gap rating, which says you just need a little bit of effort on the court, so the 0.4 is. You need a little more effort on police and fire, and you get down to capital and economic development, you get a whole lot after. Remember when we did this, we didn't have a department either. So those feedback elements are what form the basis of the presentation. So as we go through the budget over today and tomorrow, you should be able to say, oh, okay, I get it, tracks. And that's why, you might remember me saying to you that I wanted to start the budget process with what you thought, and exercise today is determine how well we did matching up what you wanted the budget to look like based on your priorities. So these two slides.
Where's the key term?
Put them as, yeah. So this is just another sheets. So I want to just move into some examples of how we responded. There, we included the airports, park, the services provided by planning and economic development department. The park, aquatics, recreation, and golf budgets have been strengthened. Park and the golf course in terms of maintenance, there are new positions added to deal with maintenance levels. And then in the park, in the golf course, we actually budgeted money for maintenance items like fertilizer, things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's embarrassing to say that out loud, but we're just trying to make sure we're paying attention to not only what you said, but things that make sense administratively. Pavement management program is at 4.5 million. When we go through the details on that, you'll see one of the budget versus accounting discussions that Tina and I had over the last three or four months. The tradition here is that they treat any overlay program or item that's got two inches or more of asphalt as a capital outlay item rather than a maintenance. I've been to a lot of communities that do that. I would probably put the whole thing in as a maintenance item. But ultimately, I want to make sure we get the money in there at that level, and if that's the accounting device that it takes to do that, I'll explain it. Tina said, thank you. We try to expand the use of technology as a way to provide service, both in finance and with the GIS application in particular. One of the things that I wouldn't be surprised that Ron tells you over the next year, he's identifying serious problems to expand the use of technology. That's part of what I see as our future. Kingman uses technological ways to provide the same service. We're going to talk about that a lot. And then service improvements for police and fire and so forth. Capital improvement total is 31.1 million. 23.7 of that comes from fund balances and proceeds from borrowing, it's about 75 percent. That's one of the, we started talking about this recently, capital budget looks stronger than it is because the numbers suggest that. We've got a $30 million budget for capital. I had 75 percent of it you're using from your reserves. Only about 7.5 million comes from revenue, 800,000 of that is from construction sales taxes. Water and wastewater projects account for most of the total, 20.23 million. And three projects, the downtown sewer outfall, the rebuild of Fire Station 22, and the 24-inch watering line account for about 40 percent of the total CIP. And so that's the second place that CIP numbers need to be understood better than they are, which is, say, 30 million, people think about a lot of projects. Two million for this, three million for that. Well, you get three projects, four, I think it's five or six, I can get to 60. You know, so it doesn't, a very limited list of largely water and sewer projects take you to the numbers and the Michael's. That's capital. I would just say to you that one of the, and we must talk about this more when I get there, the capital improvement budgeting process that Kingman has used for a while essentially prioritizes the projects vertically rather than horizontally. So I know what, and Ron will review the document, what the top rated capital improvement project is from the police department or from the water department. But the system, the way it's designed right now, it won't tell anybody what the top rated capital improvement project is for the city. And so that's another thing I would expect to see next year's budget and the year after is they'll be in account to change the emphasis from vertical to horizontal, so that you can see what the top five projects are for the city rather than water department. Big shift, have 90-degree access. And then the other part about the capital improvement budgeting process here is that we need to strengthen the rating schedule on the project so that it reflects more, the general reflects more of the difference in financing, so that the project, for instance, is a 50-50 match with somebody who would rate better than the project that was otherwise equal except it was 100 percent. There's a lot of process work ahead of Ron and the team here to, on the capital. And at its core is 7.5 million.
Does that 7.5 million revenue include the 0.5 percent that's allocated and then allocated to the, yes?
So on the I-11 plan, it includes most of that, and I say most because we are only dedicating a portion of the revenues that we're receiving, only funding some of that money this year. So whatever we're funding is completely revenue-based, it's a 3.0 member, but it's not the entire revenue of the stream.
If you took the entire revenue stream, that number would probably go like the 86, 85, 86. See what I'm saying?
So that only includes like 1.5 of the, and?
It's like, I think it's like 2.1, maybe it's a total. But what Tina just said is the only revenue that we counted was revenue that was attributable to a project that we included in the 19 budget. And so if money was just going to the reserve to accumulate, then we didn't count it. So if you took everything, that number would be like, say, 8.5, 9 million dollars tops. If you want.
Just real quick on, are you asking also about half percent for conservation, or are you just asking half percent?
Well, actually, at that time, I was just asking about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks like we got it. But did it include that?
That goes into the operating budget.
That's what I thought that was to say.
Any other questions? You might remember that the city had 40 funds, and since we have the airport, we have 41. We're going to really focus in on those, predominantly the general fund because that's where most city services are provided, police, fire, park and recreation, administrative, earth and pavement preservation. We created a separate fund for pavement preservation so that it's not part of general funds, not part of earth, it's its own fund. And between those two, it's the dedicated source of funding for the city street fund. Enterprise fund, airport sanitation, sewer, transit, transit's actually project focused and water are fee-based, and then transit, capital improvements, budget for the power house and project focused. So those are the 11 funds. And we're ready to get started on review of each of the divisions. But obviously, the point of the last 30 minutes has been to give you an overview of what's in the document and kind of give the framing about what we're going to be talking about. Right at the back, one of the comments, just at this table, so Tina can, you can. Any questions about what we've been talking about so far? So what we're going to do next is go through each of the, what we call, division budgets. And they'll be formatted very similarly to the first one we do, which is the city council. So you'll know when we're talking about it what the division is. You'll know what pages in your budget document you can look to, if you look to. You'll know what the budget highlight section is so that it tells you what's changed. And then you'll get a summary of the resources that are involved here, both in terms of personnel expenses, supplies, internal services. And we just keep doing that until it's time for us to break. Come back tomorrow morning at 9:00. It would be my hope that we're able to generally keep on schedule with this this morning, be at a place tomorrow that we completed not only the council, city manager, city attorney, act of street, police and fire, and health workers, but maybe so that tomorrow the administrative divisions manage that. That's the, some more geek. So the city council budget is a very straightforward document this year. It's $166,155 recommended. The adopted budget's $169,455, 3300 more than the one recommended. And we decreased the supplies and internal services. That's my step-winding presentation on the city council budget. If you have questions about it, we'd be glad to try to answer.
Got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Under office, equipment rentals?
Yeah.
Excuse me, no, I'm sorry, under program support. My bad. Mojave County Housing Authority, what is that $8,500 worth of reserves?
The city, for some number of years, has provided a financial contribution for them to deal with individuals of low income and their housing needs. And last year was a different place. But I could ask the folks in the county to fight for the information, perhaps, if I just, I understand it as part of a ongoing financial modification by the city.
Yeah, I'd like to know if it's mandated or not, or what, what the council is?
I don't think it's mandated at all.
In case it's part of the IGA that we have.
Manded, is that what you mean?
That's what I meant.
Yeah. So there's, okay.
And the other, I had, under other expenses, the dues, memberships, and subscriptions. And the other, I had, under other expenses, the dues, memberships and subscriptions for about twenty-two thousand, what does that, what does that include?
It includes a membership of the league and.
I have a question about employee recognition. How do we recognize?
Sorry, everybody, your speaker.
I'm sorry, I was asking about employee recognition because if we have sixty-five hundred dollars, recognizing employees, that's it. What are we doing?
You could, that, that budgeted amount allows the council significant discretion. You could, you could have an event for that, right? You could do a, an employee recognition event on its own. It's their fault.
It's also part of the service awards. They've been received ten years.
Right, right. It's just, there's more there than it takes to get plaques or something. That's what's happening.
With something like that luncheon the other day that.
Could have been, yeah. And we use, we use, there's a, there's a similar account, the manager's budget, we use that for that. But that's, that's actually a really good example. Turn Friday's event into a annual employee recognition event. This would be the best.
It'd be nice.
Other questions about the council? Okay. Next one is the city manager's budget. City manager's budget is higher than the currently approved because it reflects a recently about the employment agreement. Ron has intergovernmental consulting services. These intergovernmental consulting services are shared with the water fund. This is a, an agreement that I entered into earlier this year to have representation for the city of Kingman in water and transportation. And it has turned out to be a very positive experience for the city in both fronts. They, they worked with the counties and the people on water extensively. They were involved in a passage that failed that will allow the state control to be funded from a different source, from the earth, or about a hundred million dollars statewide. And then they've been involved right away acquisition, the Kingman Cross and South Road, those are the state trust lands. The one thing that I didn't do, that Ron probably wanted to do, is I didn't get them airtime at the work session to meet you. Like, so the sessions are, that would be something to do. But it's, and Ron was involved in Oregon State League, State Managers Association. Now, this is about, you know, a whole lot of cities' success is having physical presence in the state council during the session, and that's clearly what this appears to be. And then twenty-seven thousand is included to retain a special assistance for the city to assist with the transition. I've shared, I'll give it, the transition between myself, Ron, and just a whole unball of the transition project. If Ron chooses to get additional resources and the number of projects, half a dozen million projects, that's what that's for. All the other expenses and budgets are similar to it. So that's what the city managers look like. And questions from the group?
When I spoke with Patrick back in the last week, he told me how very helpful and instrumental tongue-torn, so I'm just curious, with the issues we're facing, is that enough money?
Yeah, that's why I'm questioning. He's under, he's, he's under contract through October, I think it is, at this rate.
Okay.
And my recollection is the extension that he signed. Yeah, I'm sure it's.
Thank you. So just, I have a question about that, just to clarify. It's not going down eleven thousand, it's just this contract releasing is part of the year.
And it's, and we found out that the, how did this time go with water, a lot more than the, you know, dramatic. And so we changed the internal allocation, there's water now and other things. So that's why, that's what that contract itself is, is that it more of it belongs to it.
Okay. Is he going to be working outside of the session on the water legislation with the groups, the communities of the state and local?
Yeah. One of, several probably are aware of this, actually, one of, one of the things that's almost counterintuitive about people who do this kind of work is that some of the best work they do is outside the session.
That's why I think that the captain doing that, and also if he could come and like inform us, you know, like what's going on, that would be great. Because I, I have been, I remember being told that water's going to be addressed, well, the governor actually said that it's going to be addressed by the city as the session. So I think we've got.
Somebody should, somebody should remember that. Yeah, water, I hope you remember the Nick Hahn presentation from February, Frank, and it's like, well, this is easy, Frank, and it's, you'll get this done. No, every single thing on water this session is hard, really, really hard. And I don't think it's going to change personally, but I, Ron has to, you know, make those judgments. But I, the, my intention was to have Tom under contract with the city of King, not only through the legislative session, but the current legislature, the legislature that has started, that's where I'm at, for sure. And then my thought was going to happen was to key which you can. We have a meeting October with the state transportation board. Tom's the guy who put that meeting together with the governor's person and the ADI staff. They're holding up the dots on that. So transportation, they go away as a concern. Water's not, a lot of the pieces, parts of these actions involve state land. There's a fact, like, there's a state land, there's a board, there's a lot of constitutional office of governors on it, creditors on it, that has to explicitly sign off whether or not the state trust land gets, and it's a power. And so there's, there's plenty to occupy. And it, and it actually is a complement to the board, looking at the manager's office So that you're not trying to, you're not going to ask your community affairs person to be down and figure yourself out and ask the community affairs to make sure that they're in contact with this person in the building, effectively. One person essentially is saying, the physical present doesn't matter. If you don't believe that, ask the policy candidate, who didn't think they did.
Just one question. Will Tom be working with the water's employee commission or case?
We haven't thought of him in that context, but his contract certainly will offset that.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, we're getting complaints from the public that they cannot hear anybody on the live room, so if you need your microphones or you're speaking directly into it, that they're having a very hard time hearing us.
Thank you. I think that means you.
Thank you.
The next budget is city attorneys, and one of the things that I try to respect on the city attorney's budget and the magistrate's budget is that they don't work for the city manager. They're independent officers. And so I will say a couple of things, but then give Carl a chance to say whatever he wants to say. And I'll do the same thing with the magistrate. The city attorney's budget recommendation is up seventy-eight thousand dollars. Biggest single driver of that is an additional fifty thousand in professional services, and that's based on recent experience. Budget per is a hundred. And the other thing is that he has a deployment agree.
With you.
Same with, so that's the second one. Last and least, post-relationship expenses. There's a little bit of an offset in communication expenses, not supplies, but not, that's true. So we're talking about the failure to surprise. And so that's what the numbers look like. Carl can talk to you about the budget for his department, what he sees for the future.
Sure. I guess, you know, when you look at the budget document, the first error on my part, though, is organizational chart. Just have to tweak that. I think I listed his legal secretary, and last year we did change them to legal assistants. And my assistant city attorney technically has been the hierarchical control. He doesn't have direct reports, but that's nothing really major. And as Jim was saying regarding the budget, we did ask for an increase. I don't know if fifty thousand is going to be enough, depending on what happens over the course of the year, but with discussions with the manager and finance, there's always the ability to do some transfers. And those transfers are pretty public, so everybody's aware of what we're doing, where we're going. So it doesn't look like we're trying to bury, bury that dollar anywhere. I think it's probably the third or fourth year in a row I've asked for more people. I always get denied, I understand that, we're in tough times. And Jim was a tough hatchet man this year, so as always, I would like to have an assistant city attorney, an illegal assistant. I will make that request again next year, and hopefully I'll be able to be successful in my presentation at that point. But other than that, there's nothing too exciting in my budget, I think, pretty stable from prior years.
Questions about the city attorneys?
I have a question. Is it an additional fifty thousand in professional services are recommended based on recent experience? And what are we referring to when you say recent experience?
Airport.
Okay. So what are we referring to? I didn't know he was wrapped up in.
Yeah, it's coming out of my profession, so.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. One thing that I didn't mention when I was doing the city manager's budget, and probably should have done in the highlights section, is that this recommended budget does not have a salary that we recommend to city staff. And I had mentioned that to you earlier, that I thought that the pay plan needed to be changed so that you can get the human resources you see in the recommendation. Do that, but I wanted to acknowledge the contributions of the staff. So in each of the budgets that have employees, there's a one-time payment equal to three percent of the salary provided every year. That's, it all, it's a fact about people. And Tina was kind enough to put that on its own line in personnel expenses, and it's called special distribution. Someone can read the detail, you can see special distribution, that's what that is. And you see that everywhere in the city staff.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Just briefly, we've, we've been discussing the potential for adding traffic light cameras. I know some cities, I don't know how it works here, and I don't, this is your part, but I know that some cities have traffic referees, they have, you know, when there's traffic trials, oftentimes, and they're just, the traffic defense is not misdemeanors, the officer will basically testify towards a state and sort of act as the attorney to some degree. Both red light cameras, would that have an effect on your office at all, or is that something that will, between the law enforcement agency and the magistrate, the court?
The way, I guess it probably won't be a big change for us, and as you're noting, civil traffic cases, we don't appear, my office doesn't appear unless there's an attorney representing the defendant. And what that allows is under those rules of procedure, the officer, when they're prosecuting your case, they're not allowed any cross-examination. But if we bring an attorney and if we feel we need to do that, use some cross-examination, there's other issues involved, we'll, we'll participate, but only when the officer really wants us there. Now, when you go to the red light camera, I suspect what will happen is the first few of those that come in, we will participate just so we can be acquainted with the process, the, if the court agree with the process and the officers. But I think once that moves forward, you'll find that the department's going to be similar to how they do civil traffic. Whoever's that person appoint, covering those, those tickets for law enforcement, again, I'm making that assumption, they're still working on the plan, they will be the ones making those presentations. But looking at, and speaking with some of the cities down in the valley, they do find that, well, once people look at the video that's associated with it or the pictures, they just, they just pay, they plead to it, they pay their fine. It's a lot of, yes, once you see the effect of all those playoffs. But I think there will be an impact, but it'll be minimal in my, in my department. I can't speak for how it's going to affect the court.
Okay.
In fact, just to kind of follow on to that, there's a, there's a question, highlight in the. In fact, just to kind of follow on to that, there's a budget highlight in the court budget that says that the recommended budget doesn't address whatever impact there is. Because we don't know what the body. And so I've been involved with red light enforcement, sort of electronic check, about fifteen years. Was personally recommended putting it in, in one city. It was a person recommended scanning it, covered here in Arizona. And both of those experiences, I agree with what the court said. The attorney's office didn't really have much impact. And the police department itself, because people wanted to know whether or not they actually threw it on camera. And then the variables coming into this course shows. That's all I know about the court. Other questions for Carl?
Does this budget assume the red light program, we have a lower level?
Well, since we don't see an impact on this budget, the answer is it would, I would assume, I would assume this budget is unchanged, whether you would decide on red light program.
Thank you.
Chip, uh, really goes towards next year's budget, but as far as the expansion of office personnel, assistant here, one to...
Yes, sir.
Maybe what that number looks like, sixty, seventy thousand maybe?
Uh, I'm not, it would be, you're looking, I think I would need another assistant city attorney that would be assigned to the civil, would be a civil division. So when you conclude, I probably wouldn't be able to hire at the entry level, because our entry level is too low. So I'd have to go to mid-range, which I believe is eighty...
Eighty.
Eighty-eight thousand, plus you add the associated costs on top of that. And then I'd also say I would need an illegal assistant, which, and I don't know where that's at. But it's, you know, technology is a great thing, and as technology expands, the use of those body cameras that the police department's using adds work to my department. Because for every hour of videos, probably about two hours of review that my office has to review, that we have to do prior to releasing as discovery or public records requests. So the more of the officers get these, the more time that it takes for me. Same thing with public records requests. My past eighteen months, two years, I think I'm in somewhere thirty to forty thousand emails that I've reviewed just on those public records requests, not the other public records. So technology's a lovely thing, saves time, but also costs a lot of time. And makes me even.
I've got a fee of a hundred, a hundred and fifty next year?
About a hundred and twenty-one for an assistant city attorney and for legal assistant.
Thank you.
Other questions? Great. The next budget is the magistrate. He wanted to make sure he had enough to keep him speaking today, which I said absolutely. So to keep the peace between the city manager's office and magistrate, with the court, or operating the police department, except that it keeps it going. So I'd take a look, see if I can...
Police speak today?
Magistrate, yeah. Most of these. Both, yeah.
Well, yeah, this is like one of the most positive sections.
Where do we go? Right here.
Judge, Michelle, can I ask you guys to turn on your microphones?
Okay. You ready? We are. I'm going to explain to the, your budget has decreased by almost ten percent. Or a hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight, or nine hundred and sixty dollars. And then Judge has some things he wants to share with you. And I bet one of them is this slide right here. And so I will turn it over to the judge at the next one.
Okay. Good morning, y'all. See y'all there. That's the Oklahoma judge y'all hired three years ago. Hasn't gone away yet. The, again, appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. Looks like I got fifteen minutes allotted. I don't get to see, I mean, you know, I answer to the city council, mayor, vice mayor, city council. I don't get to see y'all very often. So if I take up all fifteen minutes, sorry, but I'm going to, because, you know, we don't get to interact a whole lot. So getting a one touch on the budget and, you know, what we've got going on over at the court and everything. And hopefully y'all are pleased with what's going on over across the street. But yeah, if you, if we start out with the budget here, going through the pages that were prepared and sent over. First of all, when we start out here, the positions, we haven't added any new positions here. It's just we've changed a couple of the positions. If you notice, it says we don't have a court collections officer, now we have an assistant court administrator. And again, we've tried to get up this speed. That was one of the important things when I came on board, was we can have an assistant court administrator if we should. And so the court collections officer has become the assistant court administrator in that, which previously done. But then we've got the title change and everything, and I think that just supports the organization and the structure of what we're trying to get accomplished over at the court. And also with the, also you see on here the veterans court clerk, and then you see the veterans program coordinator, the same person. Again, just the title has been changed. The program coordinator more reflects about the duties and responsibilities of what that position entails. And also that in the grade of salaries and everything, that's been slotted accordingly, and that's already been done. So again, when you look at the positions, looks like a lot of positions in there. But at the end of the day, it's the same number of positions. We've just, they've been just slotted and titled appropriately. Again, yeah, as Jim had mentioned, our budget has decreased, and hopefully that pleases the council. Again, we try to be very responsible with our, the monies that are allotted to us. And we're proud to come back here and show that, you know, we decreased close to ten percent. And, you know, it looks like an excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're saving the city. The reason we, two of the biggest reasons we've been able to do that. One is with the, we reduced our veteran street and court budget by twenty-five percent. And a lot of that is because of the SAMSA grant that we were awarded jointly with Lake Havasu. Again, last year, we were the only court in the state of Arizona, and only four across the country who were awarded this grant. We are very proud of that. I think it shows the dedication from our court, as well as from you all and from the community in the city of Kingman, about trying to help our veterans, our most treasured citizens. And so because of that, because we were awarded that, again, at the end of the day, it saves money for the city. It's, it's not that our program is slowing down or getting smaller, it's growing. I mean, we have over twenty veterans in the program now. It keeps growing and growing and growing. And so, but because of that grant, we're able to adequately provide for veterans to do the best program they possibly can. I'm very proud of this program, as we all know. And, but also it saves the city some money. And then, but the biggest thing, the biggest chunk is the jail cost. And you see my, the program that I developed here that was implemented here the first of the year is my failure to pay program at the Kingman municipal court. Bottom line is this, when looking at the budget over the years and as I came on board, it is, I don't know what adjective I want to use, alarming, maybe that's not it, but concerning when a third of the court's budget, I mean, is jail cost. What is that? A third of the court's budget should not be based on jail costs. And as we look at this and look at the numbers, such a big chunk of that was on incarcerating people on failure to pay. Putting defendants in jail for thirty, sixty, ninety days in jail because they couldn't pay their court costs. At the end of the day, it costs over two thousand dollars to put a defendant in jail. That's a cost incurred on the city, to the court, to the city, to jail somebody for failing to pay. They get a sixty-day sentence, where now we're four thousand, ninety days, over six thousand dollars. That's absurd. That's ridiculous. And so with my new program, again, what we're piggybacking on are the fair justice initiatives that are really being promoted through the state of Arizona in trying to avoid incarcerating people for failure to pay. And they've been through, if you see my flow chart and how people are given so many different options on, you know, how they can satisfy their financial obligations. And if they're unable to, you know, we're bending over backwards to help them and get those things remedied. You know, I talked to so many of these defendants who, you know, it's just like, why aren't you taking care of this? They just feel like it's just this mountain they can't climb over because, you know, they're making minimum wage, they're not working at all, and what do I do? Just give up and, you know, fine, just put me in jail, whatever. No, we're changing the thinking on this. We're letting them know, look, there's alternatives. You don't want to be in jail. I don't want you in jail. The city doesn't want you in jail. The jail doesn't want you in jail. The jail's overcrowded. They've got enough people that need to be there, whatever. So at the end of the day, it's a win-win proposition with the program. And I really believe it's been successful as this has been implemented. I can see with the numbers that Michelle gives me every month on our bill from the jail. And it's really, you know, obviously we have to, we utilize the jail for a lot of different things or whatever. But when it comes strictly down to the failure to pay, that is what was costing the city and the court's budget so much money. And there's different alternatives. Michelle paints, when I use this phrase, I use it all the time, and she comes in all the time. But there's more than one way to skin cat. And this makes sense. And again, we're standing on top of with the fair justice initiatives, which are being promoted, which we want to avoid people being in jail. Now, sometimes they are going to end up in jail because they failed to show up on my failure to pay documents or things like that. But you know what? You get your point across. If they had to spend the night in jail, if they were in there a couple of days or whatever, after a few days, studies show, it has no effect that, you know, if you're putting them in jail for thirty, sixty, ninety days, all they're doing is they're losing their jobs, they're losing their homes, then they can't pay the court, can't take care of their obligations, it just makes it worse. And then, again, that mountain is too high to climb over for them. They just give up. So that I want to show that we're working with them. And also, one thing I presented to y'all previously is with the community restitution program, where, you know, we're really promoting that, really pushing that strong. And also how it's been great to have a partnership with the other departments here in the city. Tourism, fire, up works, parks and rec. How if someone's going to be doing quarter-ending community service hours, then it comes back to the city. At least half their hours have to be done for the city of Kingman. And so then that comes back full circle and everything. So if they're not able to pay on their financial obligations and money for new service hours, then at least, you know, some of their hours are still going back to assist the city. They can do the other half of their community service hours, again, for the city, or they can do it for a local nonprofit organization, if they have a court for list, or any local religious organization. I went through that with you all previously. But really believe in this program, really believe it's working, really believe we're making progress. And for you all, as we're talking here, when it comes down to budgets, it is saving money. We are saving the city of Kingman a lot of money on this. And it's just, like I said, a win-win-win situation across the board. I'm proud to be able to save y'all and save my budget. This kind, these kind of monies or whatever, I mean, this isn't change. We're talking, you know, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars here. And again, this works, and I believe we're just staying ahead of the curve with the fair justice initiatives that we're trying to promote. So one other thing that's on the bottom of it here, again, the court takes no official position on this. I know it's being discussed about the red light photo enforcement program. Again, the court officially takes no position, you know, whatever y'all want to do, we will support, we'll get behind in the process over at the court. But I just want to, want to put a note in here that I don't, if this goes through, I don't know what kind of impact it's going to have upon the court, if it's going to be just minimal, that's a moot point. But if it's going to be significant or substantial, that I may be coming back within the next fiscal year and saying, hey, I need more personnel because we're being swamped under these things. I just don't know, but I just want to be on here just so that, you know, if I do have to come back six months from now, say, look, these are the numbers, and, you know, this is what's going on and stuff like that, that, you know, it was a technical, geez, Judge, so you should have brought this up before, but, you know, and so this way, just kind of putting it out there. I'm not asking for any additional personnel because of that. I'm just saying that it's just this great unknown, so I just don't know. But whatever you all put, you know, put into play, of course, we will follow through on. I'm just saying that there's that potential impact on the court.
Judge, I'd like to make a comment on that issue. We were asking other cities in Arizona what their experience has been. American Traffic Solutions, the company we're looking to contract with, actually claimed that there were eleven cities and towns in Arizona that are participating in this program. That is not true, because I'm going down the list and calling each city, asking about their experience. The most telling, I had about half an hour conversation with the city manager from Prescott Valley. They had the program in for four years. They decided not to renew it, and that was about five years ago. Their experience was not good. Okay, they had, was it effective? Absolutely. But what ended up happening is they went from approximately issuing seven thousand citations a year to twenty-two thousand citations a year. A huge, huge strain on the municipal court system. They did end up adding personnel. So I'm just hoping the council considers that this will definitely have impact. Maybe not long-term, it certainly will in short-term. That is very significant. I spoke with representatives from Sholo and Avondale as well. They also abandoned this technology. Lot of public dissatisfaction with it. It's obviously an issue. Not sure that this is the appropriate first step in addressing it. But I did want to make you aware that these other cities have all said the same thing. It was very impactful in a negative way to the court system.
Well, again, mayor, the court, should we take no position on this? Yea or nay? Again, we'll do whatever, whatever y'all tell us to do. I'm just, and again, I don't know, because like we say, it's this great unknown about, you know, if it has a minimal impact, so can we process the tickets and civil traffic hearings and things like that? But again, like I said, if it has a substantial impact, you know, and that's what the city decides to do, that's fine. I'm just saying that don't be surprised if I'm coming back here and asking that we need more personnel. I just want to stay on the, up top on this, because I feel like, geez, if I don't bring that up at this point, then, you know, you'll be saying, geez, Judge, you should have brought this up, you know, on the front end instead of the back end. So again, I take no position on it. I'll do whatever y'all tell us to do. But I'm just letting you know, and that's why that phone is in there. So again, I, it's not the court's position to say, you know, we support or we're against it. And I, I would never say one way or another. So whatever y'all want to do is what you want to do. I just have to look at the impact on my department. So, anyway.
First singer, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Let's go back to talking about jail fees for a moment.
Sure.
And we don't get a lot of face time with you, so I'm going to ask a question right now. It sounds like you're going in a good, a good direction. Do you see any additional alternative disposition or alternatives for, alternative disposition for non-violent offenders? Or how does the city handle that right now, keep people out of jail that are non-violent? Keep our jail costs.
Sure. Again, you got to remember, we're dealing with misdemeanors. We, you know, we don't sentence a lot of people to jail, you know, on the back end when they, when they actually get sentenced, remember? And sometimes people earn that based on their record or based on, you know, their history and things like that. But, you know, at the end of the day, that's why when you look at this, and when I was analyzing the whole, how many people were put in jail and how long and everything, a large share of these costs and the lengthy jail sentences were because of failure to pay. And again, going at the same time where, you know, the fair justice initiatives coming out of Phoenix are saying, look, we don't want you to put people in jail if you can avoid it for, for their just not being able to pay and everything. When you look at it hand in hand, it's like, okay, we can stay on top of this and we can, you know, eliminate the costs and everything. But no, it's not like we're, again, we're doing, we're a misdemeanor court. We're not putting people in jail and giving them these long jail sentences. Really, I'm getting a misdemeanor. Sometimes they, you know, they end up with a ten-day jail sentence. Sometimes we're simply completely negotiation or just... sort of completely negotiation or just completing, winding it to the core, they end up with whatever disposition they get. But again, you could just tell by the numbers here, if we're streamlining the failure to pay process, you could see what kind of impact it's having, and that just tells you right there that, yeah, we're not really keeping people in jail for lengthy sentences. So, does that answer your question? Yes.
Judge Singer?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you finding that with the alternatives that you're offering to jail, that there's a higher recovery rate for the fees or for the fines?
Again, we're kind of early on with this new program, but, you know, I think we're, I think we're getting through the, you know, a lot of what I see on the front end when I'm just dealing with defendants one-on-one and everything, and, you know, when I'm saying, you know, we're having a heart-to-heart talk. I mean, this is adding more time to my courtroom duties or whatever, and I know it's shocking all of you that I'm a talker or whatever, but I know that's surprising. But, you know, the old-school way of doing it is just to, you know, smile, oh, you didn't pay? Here, here's three days in jail, goodbye. I'm spending 10 to 15 minutes with each one of them trying to rework their thinking. They might just start making excuses, or starting on this and that and everything, and basically what it comes down to is I'm trying to explain to them, you got to meet me halfway. I cannot help you. You don't, you know, let me know what's going on with you, and I will work with you. And I try to get through them, look, we both had the same goal. You don't want to be in jail. I don't want you in jail. And so, really, I think, it seems to be effective, because, you know, we, I don't have the numbers right now because this is so new, but I just think that people are realizing, hey, judges are going to listen to me. I have now, if you see on my flow chart, not like I didn't have enough dockets going on, but I found one Wednesday every month where I throw in, I have a quote-unquote Judge Singer's failure to pay docket, which we didn't have before. I don't know how many people were on that docket.
Fifty-sixty.
Huh? At least 50, 60. Not all of them show up, and that's surprising. But, again, they know that, you know, before warrants had to be issued, we sent them notes in the last one, and they go, come to this docket, talk to Judge Singer about this. They also know that they can work with our collections department and try to work things out with them, but if they're unable to do that, and they feel like, you know, nobody's listening to them, they always have the option to say, I want to see Judge Singer, and we'll put them on that docket, and then we'll talk to them one-on-one and figure out what's going on with them. I want them to be proactive, and I think when they realize, look, you know, I'm not going to put down other judges, other judges have different techniques, but you've got somebody who's going to listen to you, who's going to work with you, who's going to understand. Understand, life gets in the way, because you have emergencies, or work, or difficulties, or whatever the situation is. I work with you, but you got to meet me halfway. You got to let me know what's going on with you, and that's what we're trying to do, is to let them know, look, they're just going to be in jail, and incur all these jail costs, and just, you know, continue the cycle. Let's break this cycle. So, I believe it's being effective, and I mean, you know, I don't have the numbers right now, but hopefully, hopefully, we are making some headway.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes, I have one quick question. Is this policy regarding not placing defendants in jail being adopted or this attitude being adopted throughout the, throughout the court? I think you have an associate magistrate. Is she is in the same?
This is the policy, this is the policy of the court here. It doesn't matter which judge, if it's me, or if it's the hard-time associate city magistrate, or if, you know, we have weekend judges who come in and see all the limited jurisdiction courts or whatever. That's the, right there, that's the policy of the court, and that is the policy to be implemented and to be followed, and it is followed to a T.
Implemented by all.
So, that's all I could say about that. You know, I don't tell other judges how to rule or make decisions, but at the end of the day, that policy that you're seeing on the board right there, that is the policy of the county municipal court on failure to pay, and that is the policy that this followed in my court. So, thank you.
I just have a quick comment. I just want to say thank you. This book is a pretty dry read, and your chap, no offense, no offense. Your chapter was a highlight, and I just want to say that I really appreciate that you're going back through and looking at your processes and the way you operate, and looking for things that maybe used to make sense, but they don't make sense anymore, and it's an opportunity to, one, help people, and then to save money, save assistance money. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I want to add on that, too. For those of you all who don't know, this is, I call her our new court administrator. She's almost been here about a year, but when our previous one was on the job for 32 years, she's still within person. This is, again, Michelle Amaya, our new court administrator. She came over from the Justice Court, so she's been just so tremendous in coming over with, you know, ideas that they had over there, so when we kind of merged those and everything, it's been just a great union and everything. So, we're very, again, we're continuing to stay ahead of the curve and kind of follow what you're saying, and look at the best ways to handle the court operations and everything. So, again, you're last judge and court administrator, we're here over 30 years apiece, now you got the two of us running the department, and hopefully, we can continue to do y'all a good job. So, we're very proud to have represented the city of Kingman, and very proud of what we're doing.
Judge, I just have a quick comment, because we do not have much face time.
Yes.
So, thank you for finding ways to reduce money in the budget, for your tremendous initiatives with Veterans Court. And just yesterday, I saw you counseling an individual that you're pulling into Veterans Court from municipal court that owes over $6,000 in fines, and your comment that you do spend a lot of time heart-to-heart, I witnessed that yesterday, and I think these initiatives are going to be a success, and thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate it, and like I say, I, you know, when it comes to Veterans Court, again, that's kind of the thing that gets a lot of attention and recognition, and I will say this, I get too much credit for that. I'm proud to run that program, but again, I think I mentioned it yesterday, and I'll always continue to mention it, I don't get to run the Veterans Treatment Court without you all. Mayor, Vice Mayor, the City Council, y'all, if y'all don't support this, I can't run the Veterans Treatment Court. So, just again, thank you on behalf of the veterans, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to run this program, because, again, I've been a judge for, what, 16 years, and a lawyer for over 20 years, and it's the thing that I'm most proud of in my legal career. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next budget that we're going to talk about is the Police Department, which is found on pages 39 to 43. And the Police Department budget is up a little over $300,000, about 2.9%. Increases in the personnel costs include that one-time distribution we talked about before. The deputy chief position, which we basically talked about last year, allows us to strengthen the administrative portion of the department. Increases in the PSPRS contribution because of rate, as well as workers comp. And there's an SRO position there for half a year contemplating that the city is successful in bringing Kingman High School to city limits. Thing you can always remember about Kingman High School, and that's a specific, that Kingman High School should be in Kingman, Arizona. If it is, we can get that SRO, so that's, that's what's, that part of the budget. The department is actively involved in recruiting, and so we've supplemented the budget to allow the department to continue to do that, as well as training. It includes 15,000 place radio equipment, 13,000 replacement equipment with ballistic vests and suppressors, as well as to equip new offices. The department anticipates that there will be an increase in fuel costs. Unfortunately, their predictions appear to be coming true. If you haven't been to the pump lately, you should doubt that. Right. So, that's included. We have an internal service cost allocation model, as everybody's aware, that has some common support costs distributed to the departments, and most of theirs is, has a deep cost. Budget for capital outlay decreased year over year, and that actually gets made up, if you will, entirely by a recommendation to provide funds in the capital budget. Like $95,000 resides, to remodel the lobbies, essentially, to provide a more secure lobby.
Does that include bulletproof glass?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
So, those are the highlights. This is what the department looks like from a resource summary. See that the recommended total's just a little under 10.7 million, and then that includes the cost increases shared with you. So, we are fortunate in Kingman to have really strong police and fire departments, both led by a very strong administrative team. And so, as I said at the outset, when we were talking about priorities, this budget recognizes that and tries to make small but important incremental changes in how the department is able to function. That's, that's my introductory comments. Questions from members of the council, the mayor, or either myself?
Well, probably for the chief.
Start with me, and then when I realize it's for the chief, I'll say, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can only hope the chief is as animated as Judge Singer was.
No, we can hope that that's not the case.
The deputy chief position?
Yes.
Going to two people in fiscal '19?
Uh-huh, correct. That means there's two deputy chiefs. Rusty's one, and the recommended position I just talked about would be the other ones.
What would be that role? Is that what you want?
Is this the same position that you were looking for last year?
We've actually been requesting to build that position for several years. That number goes all the way back to the 1990s. We're actually operating with less administrative staff in place than '90s with significant responsibilities. So, that position in the Great Recession, we had a retirement, wasn't filled, we've been struggling since, and all the tasks have been held. We're starting to get some, unfortunately, we're feeling it more so now, since we were here on the budget the last time. Our CAM program, which you're familiar with, it took us a year to get that up and running simply because of time. CJS for our, which is our criminal justice information system, computers in the cars, we still do not have connectivity. We're going to be three years this summer, the sheriff's officers being able to run license plates. Again, we're in another commitment. For the first time in our history, we received a negative audit post related to training. No one's responsibility, with the exception of myself, is charged, but we have seven people with hands in the training right now, trying to coordinate. With that, some details got missed. We've since come into compliance, but those are some of the frustrations. Everybody's just overloaded.
May I ask, what would be the, specifically, the responsibilities of the second deputy chief? What role would this person fill?
It's professional standards, and we spoke earlier when I did the presentation in regards to ALI, Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation.
Right.
That's going to be a huge responsibility that falls in there. They'll be doing that project. They'll also be, because records will be in there, we're looking at bringing in a new records management system, and we are mandated by the FBI to transition to what's called NIBR, National Incident-Based Reporting System, Uniform Crime Report. Those are three huge projects. Then you have training, you have facilities, you have purchasing, all of those are encompassed under this one particular vigil, and if you look at it with responsibilities, responsibilities are heavy, but light on personnel, we're on the other side of the house, heavy on personnel, but don't necessarily, those kind of, better balance. And this is true for each of the divisions that we're going to look at today. The table of organization that's shown is reflective of the recommended budget. So, in the Police Department's case, on page 39, that table of organization that shows two deputy chiefs reflects what the chief just shared, what I shared in my opening comments. So, you get a feel, if you will, for how the department could be organized. The chief's comments reminded me of something that I knew that sooner or later I'd wind up saying to the group. I don't know how many years you did it, I look back a couple, and that was enough for me, that you had this practice of having authorized but unfunded positions. And in a nutshell, from my perspective, either have approved positions or not. And this in-between land of authorized but unfunded, I didn't find to be helpful to anybody. Certainly not to the council and the mayor in your review, definitely not to the department, and for the staff that's at this table, absolutely not. So, so the decision was made at the start of the review of these operating budgets this year, that we were either going to have recommended budgets that included the position or the authorized but unfunded was going to go away. And so, when we got to the Police Department, as the chief said, this position, deputy chief position, was authorized in the current budget but unfunded. All I'm doing is recommending the funding to go with it, because I believe that the chief's made a persuasive case to have the position as part of the organization. Had he not, what I'd be sitting here telling you is that there is no authorized but unfunded deputy chief position. So, that's, just put a period there, and it's any other questions?
Got a couple, Jim. Under professional and contract services?
Yep.
What is the $50,000 allocated for the Humane Society? Where does that go to?
To the Humane Society?
Yes.
What we do is, that amount is budgeted in there, it's kind of an unknown as to what we get, but they were charged for all drop-offs of animals that our neighborhood services pick up, so that varies back and forth. We did operate for a while because there were some problems with their billing, and we were operating on a credit for a while, but now we're back into the cycle where we're getting actual costs related to animals.
Thank you. Just one additional question. If you go under other expenses on page 43, and you go down to laundry cleaning, I looked at the Fire Department, the other department has uniforms, I didn't see that cost. Can you tell me what that's about?
It's for uniform cleaning.
Yeah, you guys are sharp, I'll give you that.
Well, and that's part of it, is because when you take it to a professional cleaners, we see extended life wear out of our uniforms. Ours are a different uniform than what Fire would normally wear.
Got it.
Which is a more casual uniform, and so we found great success with it.
Okay.
Other questions for the chief?
I have a question. I guess I'll, I'll ask you the question then, and then make sort of a statement. I was curious as to your staff's opinion regarding overtime.
They're for it. I said they're for it.
Well, and that's, that was kind of what I was wondering, if they were reluctant or eager. I know that some people, you know, might dread it, whereas others consider it a perk or a benefit, you know, and I myself am sort of a, kind of more in favor of the 40-hour work week, I think, to get home to their family, extracurriculars, to keep their, you know, their mind fresh, and, but, you know, some people like to work the extra time, and they consider it, you know, I can't make my family budget work unless I put in extra hours and get extra benefits, but I was curious to know if you knew what your staff's position was on that?
I'm going to, I'm going to- I'm going to, obviously, let the chief answer that directly, Dave, but I, there are a couple of things in what you just said that I have to respond to, or the chief answers. When I made my comment, that's a reflection that they expect to be compensated for hours over. I mean, that's, as opposed to just go do it, which I've actually been around some departments trying to manage that. So, that's what that comment meant. Number two is that they expect that their management, my experience, they expect, whether it's here or anyplace else I've ever worked, they expect their management team is going to be able to make an articulate argument about how many people are needed, so that they're not always working extra hours. And number three is, we don't staff here, and I'm pleased to say in no place I've ever been the city manager have we staff based on the personal financial needs of the individual. It's just, we just don't do that. We ask people to work hours, some of which are paid in overtime, because the city has a need for their time, not because of whatever their personal circumstances or financial needs. So, with those three comments, as background, chief, you were asked a question by Dave?
Captain Wade, I can tell you, it's probably fifty-fifty. There's generational differences in regards to that. The overtime that we have are real numbers that we need to do to put minimum staffing. And quite often, we're our own worst enemies, where we are short out there, and myself, Rusty, others will be out running to assist during daytime hours. But the numbers that are built in are to try and shore up as much as we can. Some will work more, some are hesitant to work, they're more of a forty-hour work week. So, it's a balance that we try to strike throughout, to meet the community and the department's needs versus the individuals' needs.
And do you think if we were to reallocate overtime money towards pay increases and/or additional officer staff, do you think it would be like a wash? Do you think that would take care of the problem, or do you think we would need more money allocated towards the budget, the general salary budget, than provided by? And I say this because, you know, I went through all the departments, looked at the overtime costs, and it was over a million dollars together. I mean, that's a lot of money. If we can kind of combat that, as you said, about fifty-fifty, staff's looking at, some people are for it, other people may, maybe not so much. But if we can get around that and say, you know, everyone works forty, and we're just going to give you guys more people and/or higher wages to compensate for.
I would agree with you wholeheartedly. I've been saying that for many years, and the overtime is a reflection of trying to get staffing out there. In my fifteen-year tenure now with the department, I can tell you that our full staffing times can be calculated in months, not years. And a lot of it is reflected upon the compensation that we struggle with. I do believe that we can eventually reduce our overtime budget if we can get the staffing levels to where we need them. We're not there. Compensation's not there. Manager Bacon mentioned what we're doing with the recruiting right now, and I've expressed to him our challenges. When we look at, we're in the twenty-third percentile when you're looking at everybody across the board. Problem is, I think you, we're actually, we're in the teens, because we're not calculating in who has become our true competitors now. That's Phoenix, DPS, Vegas Metro, and San Bernardino are all actively recruiting here. So, that's, they're not calculated in there because they're viewed as, not necessarily, they skew the numbers, but it's a true, a true challenge to us right now.
Well, I can certainly appreciate and understand, you know, a new recruit coming in and being trained by a person who's making barely more than them, thinking, do I want to stick with this for ten years, just like the guy who just trained me and barely get any wages? So, I get it, and I can see why this would be training grounds for Aracopa or some bigger cities, because where you come here, you get your training and experience, and then you go make money somewhere else. Kind of an issue, I think.
I just want to come back to that idea that the chief just shared with Councilmember Wade in his response, and that is that one of the challenges that this department has had for a long, long time, and increasingly departments throughout the state are having, is that the authorized number of positions is not the number of positions that are actually filled with people, a meaningful number when you get out there. And so, part of our conversations over the last five months have been about ways to get that gap closed as a primary objective. And that's why, when we talked about recruitment, that that was a big deal, is to make that gap shorter, if you will, or smaller. The other thing is that when you hear from the fire department, twenty minutes or so, we're going to do exactly what you suggested. There's a recommendation to essentially trade overtime dollars or staffing dollars on base staff. And so, the question becomes, well, why would you do that in fire but not in police? And the chief probably has a comment to make in addition to the one I'm going to make, which is that there's a basic difference between how police departments are staffed and how fire departments are staffed. Essentially, police departments are reactive, and you don't know when you're going to need a whole bunch of people. It might be at two o'clock in the afternoon, or it might be at eleven o'clock at night. Fire departments, on the other hand, is how many people are available to respond if they're needed. And so, there's just a fundamental difference between the two public safety agencies about how you approach staffing. And that's why the chief Rhodes and I were able to come to an understanding about reducing overtime and using people a lot easier than Chief DeBries and I were, because we're still trying to, in police, we're still trying to get the staffing that's on board to match the authorized levels. And we just haven't been there. I don't think we've been, I can't think of what the closest we've been in the five months I've been here, but I know it's more than a couple that we've been under that whole time, so.
If I may, just add to that, another big difference is the amount of time it takes to get somebody into those positions. It takes us about a year from the time that we go to advertising to them functioning on their own. Classic example, we just did the heaviest recruiting we have in my tenure here as an agency. We've got a phenomenal recruiting team right now that's been working. They identified, and we invited twenty-three people to test on Monday. We're down to a hiring list of seven going into the background, and quite frankly, going into that, we're lucky if we get fifty percent. So, when we come out of this heaviest recruiting, there's a strong potential we're still going to be behind the eight ball.
How many more officers do you need?
Right now, we're looking to put, right now, we're looking to put six into the upcoming academy. And that's the additional increase cost when we talk about, I do believe we can save on the overtime at some point, but we need to get to those levels and sustain those levels. And some of the additional monies we put in there are for training dollars. We're very, very fortunate to have the Wilida Academy in Lake Havasu. It's, we're probably going to be incurring about a five hundred dollar increase for our recruits to go, but Wilida provides lunch and dinner, or excuse me, lunch and breakfast. The other academies now post as eliminated meals, and they've eliminated lodging. So, right now, it's going to cost us about thirty-five hundred dollars to send a recruit to Wilida for the twenty-week academy and feed them. If we were to go, say, to another academy across the state and send them, per recruit is going to cost us twelve to fourteen thousand dollars on top of the seventy-nine thousand dollars we already have to pay. So, it's a huge cost. So, when we get them, we need to keep them.
So, if we were to look at, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask, I know one of the objectives of HR is to propose a new pay plan?
Yes, ma'am.
That's in the coming year. So, during that process, will these salaries and...
Sure.
Be examined, and so we can look forward to...
Yeah, just a note on that. Jackie will be here tomorrow, and I'll say it again, probably tomorrow. But as the chief suggested, we're rapidly getting into a three-layer labor market for people. We have the market for police and fire, which the chief did a good job of explaining. It's multi-state and very large competitors in terms of their resources, for sure. Then there's a local market in which, if they're not working for the city, they're looking to work in a job in retail trade or food service or something like that. And then there's a middle tier that's got people who are very skilled and could be hired by somebody else in the city because of that skill package. And so, when that's, when that HR study is done next year on the pay plan, instead of the traditional, oh, it's here are the jobs, here's the market, and I think they're going to have to take into account that Kingman has found itself in this three-layer labor market, as I just outlined, and so the needs of public safety are in one place, the needs of highly skilled people that are attractive to other employers in the market because of that skill in the second, and in the third is where we're competing more traditionally with our benefit plan against the alternative benefit plans, and the base rates are pretty comparable.
Hi.
Chief, how, if at all, do you anticipate the expected annexations impacting your staffing needs?
That's a good question, and you'll probably see us back here next year. Council was gracious enough last year to give us two additional officers. You recall, our request was actually for four, and that was because we wanted to split the east bench. Right now, that's one patrol district. And if we want to add it to a second because of where we see our growth and where we see our call volume coming, that would fit into, if we could get the two additional officers, that would give us that beat six, and I believe we could accommodate the annexation of the airport at that time. And I have some ideas I've shared with Mr. Bacon as well as to how we can shore up and create some public-private partnerships as well with the industry base out there.
I have a little different answer than what the chief said. I think this budget responds to the Kingman High School annexation. And I would tell him, if I were here a year from now, that I think it responds adequately to Kingman High School, so there wouldn't be anything else. On the airport annexation, that's something that the chief, both chiefs for that matter, and Public Works and Ron have to work through to figure out what the staffing impacts are and how those would be paid for. And so, I would, I wouldn't have an answer as readily about what would happen on the airport. And other questions? Vicky?
I'm going to go back to the deputy chief position.
Yes, ma'am.
To the chief's credit, you survived without this position for quite a while, and I would rather see the money either be converted to a more competitive salary package for our existing officers, or to add more officers on the street.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I appreciate that, and I agree, we do need to increase the wages. However, adding more officers with the infrastructure we have for administration right now is going to weaken it. We're already struggling with our span of control and chain of command, and I think it's going to hurt us more than help us. Without that position, our potential of reaching accreditation by 2020 is seriously jeopardized. And that's one of the things I believe we as a community...
The only other thing, and I think you've heard me say this before, this is always hard to say, I think the pay plan is broken to the point that I wouldn't recommend spending any money on it. And I understand the consequences of that statement, but I, that's to me why it's really, really important that in fiscal nineteen, there's a pay plan that's developed that not only is responsive to the kind of concerns we've heard around the table today, but that the city can actually live with over the next four or five years.
Along those lines, a lot of the budget, as I'm reading through it, and even last year feels very reactionary. City still feels to me like in a lot of departments, we're just still reacting to things that are coming up. And that's understandable. Back when we were in a recession, you know, we were reacting to what was going on, but now, I'm wondering at what point we're going to start looking further into the future and planning out and preparing, instead of, you know, always being in this reactionary place, where we're looking forward. So, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'd almost like to see, chief, if you could come back to the council with comparisons to the other departments that we're competing against for officers. I know we're doing this study, but I don't, I would like to go into that study sort of already being armed with the information of what we're up against. What are we competing with? What are they paying? What are their benefits? You can't always be sure that a third party who's coming in to look at our compensation plan is really going to take all of that into consideration, and so double-checking those numbers. But if we could start seeing what that looks like and where you need to get to, maybe that gives us time to think about it and plan, so in the next budget, we're really doing you more of a favor to get pay that's competitive, so that we're not just training officers just to send them off somewhere else, because that sounds like it's very expensive to do. And it feels almost just like you're on a wheel, you know, you're on the hamster wheel, and how are you ever going to get off if we don't just pull the trigger and finally make some changes that are going to impact these numbers?
If I may, Mr. Bacon, we've already proposed that as a potential workshop, where we would like to come in and give an overview of what we've accomplished with the recruiting, where we see it going.
Right.
We have our five-year strategic plan all laid out as to what we believe we need to provide the level of service the community expects, anticipating the growth that's coming. We'd be happy to provide that in a more detailed formation as well.
And just a footnote to that, I'm not sure I'd agree with the reactive part, understandable reasons, I think. But the authorized but unfunded, big part of the reason that that was not going to be part of this budget is because that ties our vision backwards, not forwards.
Right.
Right? And so, we need to do more about what next year and three, four, five years looks like. And that, so you can expect, in my opinion, you can expect next year's budget document to look a lot different on the goals part, and a lot different on the performance measures Because there's a process that Ron has gone through, I think both in Lehigh and in Dallas, and you, both places, in which the Government Finance Officers Association recognizes not only your financial reports, which we've had for years, but also your budget. This budget document is probably somewhere between fifty and sixty percent of what's necessary to submit it for that award, and the part that's missing is all the stuff that your observation suggests. It's the goals, the, can't talk, the performance measures, how we're doing on them, what we're planning to, you get the, right, that forward-oriented thing? And so, I just, I can be surprised still, you know, at this time in my life, but I would be really, 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 really surprised if next year's document doesn't spend a lot more time on those areas than this document and last year's document is. If there are other questions for the chief, he'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, it's break time, and take, like, till eleven o'clock, and then...
Really, really quickly?
Yes, sir.
Before, before, so, did you want to take the opportunity to quickly remind everyone of this afternoon's coffee? I know we're on budget, but...
There is no budget for coffee this afternoon, so you're out of luck, sir.
Well, if the budget makes you sleepy, coffee with cops is at four to seven today. Thank you.
There you go. Okay.
Thank you.
Taco Bell.
Taco Bell's starting.
Taco Bell's starting.
Yes, thank you.
Everybody.
Yes, thank you.
I guess is the word I want to use, to do building and life safety. And so that's, it got its own division. And then we we break out the fire stations themselves, the physical plant. So that's, that's why you see the, the divisions. The Fire Department Administration Operations Division, which is what most people think of as, as the Fire Department, only went up about fifty-five thousand dollars. And the, the story in this budget is what we were just talking about ironically with the Police Department. It's about overtime and people and how we can reduce overtime, still have the staffing needs. And so that's, that's to me the big story on the, on the salary part of this. The way that that works, and if had a chance to go through your budget, you've seen this already, is that the chief is going to apply for a Safer Grant to hire two additional firefighters. And we're going to reduce the amount of budget over, budgeted overtime. Because he and I believe that having those two firefighters on will take care of those overtime dollars. Because what we were using the overtime dollars to do was to fill in the staff. And so that's why the overtime budget is down by seventy-five thousand. That's why there's two positions recommended.
Pardon me, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Could you tell me more about that Safer Grant? How long is that in effect for?
It's a, it's actually through FEMA.
Mm-hmm.
It's, so they pay it down and over three years. So it's a seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent, and I believe a sixty-five or thirty-five.
And then it goes away?
And then it goes away. And then we would own that employee in full.
Thank you.
Right. So the the predicate for doing this is that the chief did not have the same number of people on every shift. And so you're filling those shifts with overtime. So in the absence of the Safer Grant, we basically be saying, well, we're going to put the positions in. So this is essentially a way to save money in the first couple of years we're doing this. And so if you have other questions about Safer Grant, we're happy to.
I, I just have a quick question. How confident are you that you will receive, receive that grant?
The funding for all FEMA grants, and there's really three big ones between the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, which is more equipment and, and hard goods, a prevention grant and the Safer Grant, all that funding has reduced. It's, it's a very competitive grant with those numbers going down. So our, our application went in a few weeks ago, and, and I think we always put together a pretty good application that grades out well. It, it's kind of funny because our, our Assistance to Firefighters Grant, as the committee was sitting there, the people in the room were actually getting notifications that they got denied. So there's actually peer reviewers. So ours made it through those, those steps. So that's that grant. But it shows kind of the quality that we put together. We've, we've gotten several over the, several over the years of those types of grants. So Safer is just a little bit different animal, I would say. Hopeful, very hopeful.
And then the other change is the Assistant Chief position is Keith Eaton. He's taken responsibility for building and life safety. So we moved him over to professional contract services up by eighty-two hundred and change as software maintenance anticipated cost increases. And a lot of the increase in supplies and services is for protective clothing. That's about forty-eight thousand. The department has a five-year replacement plan for that, and they want to add the SCBA face mask and tracking devices to the uniforms and provide that to new employees as well. And it ultimately gets folded into the, to the forty-eight thousand number. Previous years, protective clothing was budgeted as capital outlay. And so we didn't see it as rising to the threshold of capital outlay. So it comes in operating expense and that's, that's what that's about. And internal service allocations were higher because of fleet maintenance. I'm, I I should probably give Ron a chance to defend himself on this one, but I, I would expect that he tells you about how old your fleet is sometime during the next year. Because City of Kingman has the, and it's not just in fire. It's not just in parks, that's not just in sanitation. Hard to find and the fleet now doesn't come expensively. So one of the things we're doing with that eight hundred thousand, actually using it by new fire trucks. Department, one half of truck per year so that it mimics a revolving capital program. And so as the fleet gets older, the, the internal service fund costs go up. That's why you so Yeah.
Just well fast as well. We, our fleet is also increased. Talked about last year. That has to be allocated as well. So we're up in allocation at least.
And so that's fire operations.
Did you say one half fire truck per year?
Well, that's, we're doing one fire truck. We're doing half this year and half next year historically.
Right.
Right.
That's going to just keep.
Well, I would, that's ultimately what the council and Ron think about how to use that money, but that's what my, part of my thought process was to do that. Large, necessary capital equipment that was too hard to handle in one budget year spread out.
That would behalf of the engine.
Yeah. So, you know, I would rather use that capital money for different things, frankly. That's why I said what I did about fleet, because it's, it's a big number. Do you look at every, it's a question or a comment there?
Do you know the number?
No, no, that's not, there was a slide I did back in January that had a bunch of empties in it. That's, that's part of it.
That utilized the whole eight hundred.
Total fire truck, five hundred, five twenty-five to equip?
Yeah, it goes up. Equipped is about five forty. As much money as Tina will give me, I can equip it better.
Know if we're going to be able to get an when we're going to need that?
No, so we're, okay, are you talking about to replace the one piece of fire apparatus?
No, just whatever fleet issues.
Oh, I, that's a, that's up to this year.
Yeah.
Digging into that.
That's, I think that's important, not just for the council.
You know, I mean, my, my favorite, I mean, this is jumping ahead and, and taking Fire Department time, but I mean, my favorite example of, of fleet is sanitation. Where, you know, the way we financed new packers was to look at the fund balance and see how much money we could take out of the fund balance and, and buy a packer rather than have the rate payers pay for it. Right? And, and now we're down to the point where there's no money left in the fund balance that we could use for packers. And so then we have to, now we have to do a rate study to determine how much the rate should be so that you can have packers in that rate base as well. And, and so this is, this is one of those thematics in this budget. Capital wears out. And, and there's a mindset that, that I've run into over the years, and I bet Ron has too. People think it's capital, it's going to last forever. You know, Fire Department gets a new pumper, it'll last fifty years. No, it doesn't. And, and they cost a lot of money. And so that's, that's where we are in big ticket stuff. We've done, frankly, we've done okay on things like police cars or police car replacements in the, in the budget. And so if it, if the, if, if the, if the rolling stock item is like forty or fifty grand, then we're, we're pretty okay. Gets up to be a quarter of a million or more, then we, it's like, nah. And it, and, and so the, the staff historical reaction has been, oh, well, we'll just, we'll try to fix it and make it go another year. And so now you've got, you've got, literally, you've got packers that are twenty years old. And so what Chief has done since he's been here is he's tried to take his, his major pieces of fire apparatus and say, put them on a schedule for replacement. If we can essentially do a down payment on it, you know. So there, it's not that we're not paying attention to it, it's just that it's, it's a really big number. And Tina's probably done some work because helped Ron. Because you can't, can't make the internal service fund at all if you're not doing that. I may be guilty of a little bit of overstatement, but I, I just think fundamentally the, the need to pay attention to capital equipment needs in the city is something that people ought to be aware, I agree with the state of people ought to be aware of, but I doubt it. And when I did that slide in January, I didn't intend that I was going to have time to do that. But I did intend to raise that as an issue. So this budget is
I agree with David. I'd really like to get some sort of estimate of what that number looks like so that we see really where we're at. I mean, I'm making this mental tally all the time of underground infrastructure, sixty-four million streets, four and a half a year, PSPRS going up steadily. Now I'd like to know what, what it looks like. Are we talking two million? And I mean, I, I, it would just be nice to have ballpark figures.
So how many pieces of apparatus do you have?
We've got six frontline, or six engines, two of those reserves, which are our older ones. So whenever we get a new one, one of our, one of our front lines will roll to reserve and we'll get rid of reserve. In these cases, we got la, the one last year and this one that's coming up are twenty-plus years old, which isn't, which is a little older than it should be. So, so to digress from that. So six engines, a ladder truck, rescue, and some ancillary pieces, those are our big pieces. So you're talking about eight, eight, nine big pieces that are crucial. Those are the big ticket, ticket items.
After doing the piece.
I got it, yeah, I got it, thanks. Yep.
And we can even, we even look at one of our options you'll see in the, in the fourth and fifth year out as a, a refurb of our ladder truck. Our ladder truck is twenty years old. But to go buy that truck on the market today, it's one point six, just for that ladder truck. We're not going, we, in our assessment, we don't think, between us and, and our facilities, Chris Farron and Scott Yocum out there, in assessing that, there's a place out of Vegas that will refurb it. And they basically go through, gut it, clean it all up, do, do what's necessary, and we can keep it another ten years pretty easily. So we think that's the best economic way to go and still keep a vital piece of equipment, especially as we start growing more with hotels and things like that. We have to have a ladder truck. And you'll see, you've probably heard me say in the past, that when we look at Station Five, that needs to be, it's what's called a, a mid-range, it's a hybrid between a pumper and a ladder truck. It's called a quint, and it's a seventy-five foot aerial. It's, and that's about seven to eight hundred thousand. So it's, big, big rolling stock, it's not cheap, that's for sure.
That's the truck that you're going to ask for in a new station in the East bench?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify that. And that was how much?
About eight hundred.
Eight hundred, yeah.
On top of the
Well, it's just
No, I mean, we need to know these things.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, now, now that we have a dedicated capital improvement revenue source, or, or the big rolling stock, you know, the police, fire, the sanitation stuff, are we now in a position to, okay, we want to buy a new piece of equipment and we, we set aside a portion of that, if we want to buy a piece of equipment in eight years, and we put a portion of that aside every eight, every
That's where this is headed.
To buy that at year eight, right? Is that what we're trying to go to?
So, so in, in my idea of how life should be
Right.
Which is not necessarily yours or Ron's, is you get an internal service fund created that has annual charges every year coming out of the operating budget so that there's enough money in that internal service fund to buy those big pieces of apparatus.
You have to do that every year.
So that's, so that's, that's why we're talking about all this, okay? Sanitation and, and water equipment and all that, to me, ought to be driven as part of the rate base rather than out of the TPT dollars that you were suggesting, right? And so it's, it's a little more complicated than when you start out with the premise. But as the chief just said, roll, rolling stock in large, for large items that are general fund or special fund financed is a, is a huge piece of this capital improvement, capital outlay. So hopefully that gives, gives you a little thumbnail sketch about what it looks like for fire. And and the fleet, as it gets older and older, that means that Scott Yocum's crew, in public words, has to spend more time doing repairs.
Right.
Okay? The flip side of this, the reason that this is actually, shows you why most people don't want to be city managers because of the stuff we think about, is I've actually been in places that had enough cash that we could get the fleet new so that almost all the fleet repairs were done under warranty so we could reduce the number of employees working in the garage. Right? Which then accelerated the amount of money we had to, to replacement equipment. We're so far from that that I'm not sure why I just took airtime to explain it to you. You know, our, our problem is we've got necessary rolling stock that is aging to the point if, it's kind of a kindred spirit to the streets, that if we don't deal with it, you know, we're going to have everybody there but no way to get them there. And so that's why I took all the Fire Department's time on, on, on the operating budget to talk about is, is apparatus. Because I think that's, that's the number one piece to it. The other stuff that's in here that I talked about matters because that's the safety of the firefighters. That we've been able to handle. You know, and we're, it would be nice to put that in the same kind of internal service fund where you just, you know, on a five-year schedule and where you go. But the dollar volumes there, we're generally able to handle. We, we're not that place on the rolling stock. If, if I could move to the fire stations themselves, the first bullet point is the increase in the recommended fire station budget for FY19 represents an effort to address the quality of living within the fire stations as well as maintenance and repair of existing equipment. That's my way of saying, we want to do in those fire stations the same thing we did downstairs, which is make the space more updated and more conducive to having employees live there. And this would apply to all three of the stations named twenty-two, which we have a different plan for, as you know, from last week's session. So it just to me is, is real straightforward but real obvious. Chief, you want to say anything?
The, the only thing I'd say on that, and you'll see a couple of things. The Maclay compressor is, is one of those, we have a new compressor from a couple of years ago. We use this one out of Station Three. It just needs overhauled, just to, just to keep it going, just in case something happens at either place. The washers and dryers and a couple of other efforts that we're making is simply to deal with cancer in the fire servers. That's, that's a tremendous effort for us. And if we go back to the other, I don't, I don't want to go back, but the other budget talks about PPE. And if we go back to our, the gear that we wear every day, our protective clothing, lots and lots of cancers, lots of links to cancer. And so this is an effort, in addition to adding that gear, there's replacement cycles due to standards and things like that that we have to meet. But this is a tremendous liability. And, and to steal the line early, we were very reactionary, but I think last year it allowed us to get ahead of that. And we put a hundred and twenty-five thousand towards a five-year replacement plan for that, for PPE radios, monitors, and vehicle extracation equipment. So we can manage those pieces out over five years as we need it. So, so we're getting ahead of that, which comes into this piece and which is, I want an effort to where our people show up in civilian clothes. They leave in civilian clothes because of that direct tie to cancer. That, that's tremendous for me. And it goes back into some of the items we talked about with diesel exhaust and some of those things. Those are things that we need to work on over the next few years. No, that's a bigger capital item. But having washers and dryers that are extractors to where an individual can take out his, take off his bunker gear that was just contaminated at an event, he can set it aside, he can put it on his other set, wash this, get it, get it decontaminated, get it back in service. That's tremendous for us because our reserves, through the accreditation process, showed that, which we already knew, we just didn't have the, enough reserves. So if you had a, a fire or an event at hour two of a forty-eight hour shift, that individual would have to stay in that gear for two days and expose himself and everyone around him to those carcinogens that were out there. So that's, that's a big effort for us and, and a much needed, along with the aesthetics and things like that, there's something to be said for cleaning up a building. It just, it kind of freshens things up. You take our building, that we just painted the walls gray, poor choice on color, but it's not that old blue that it was, the old doctor's office that just brought you down. It just freshened things, it cleans things up. And so those are, those are big, and it just, the little love in those stations goes along.
Okay. And then the last one is, is building safety. And that's largely because, the, the increase is largely because we moved the Assistant Chief over there from the Fire Administration unit. And the over, we've been talking overtime this morning, that there's additional ten thousand dollars to allow the department to do more public education about fire, so it's using the existing folks to do that. And then the other items are enumerated there to explain the increase. This is, to me, pretty, pretty straightforward, holding the course of action. Chief has done a really good job integrating building and life safety in his department over the last year, has been willing to change team members to, to make that happen. And communities start to figure out that you go to the Fire Department to get a building permit, and part of why the sign's up, to make sure they have that message reinforced. And so I, Chief and I are here to answer any questions you might have about building safety or the other two shops, but like I said, building safety is pretty straightforward.
I, I would say one thing on that. You saw recently that Keith got his building official, which, not his desired course of action in his career by any means, but we continue to recruit for that building official position. And what we find in a couple of our positions, unlike police that was recruiting earlier, we're able to recruit a little more effectively on the, on that level, not on this level. Not on the, we have a Battalion Chief VMS in our fire budget and then this building official. So it's just a difficult draw. So you get one of a couple of things, somebody that's retired and wants a second career, or somebody young and you got to develop. So, so it's a challenge. I'm actually meeting again with HR today to see some additional steps, so. But we continue to recruit for that position.
I think there's been a, there's been a marked improvement in customer service, so I want to thank you guys for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And that was, in, in some of the, the issues early on, when we, that was a reason that we took it over. And to where we are today, I, I'd say that's the one thing that I'm probably most proud of, is that customer service piece that the Fire Department does bring that. So, so thank you very much, that means a lot.
So the, the two biggest things in the fire budget to me are the initiative on people versus overtime, which we talked about. I appreciate the chief's engagement on, and the new fire station, which we'll officially talk about during the capital budget, but we really talked about last week. And is included in. Everything else to me is pretty much just little, little steps to, to make things better and, and try to figure out how we're going to finance major pieces of apparatus. Tina?
Dispatch?
We're getting the dispatch. I, I think of dispatch separately. I, I think that the, the people realize that the Fire Department was a great place to put building because they'd already taken over the nine eleven. And so that, I just said to Tina that I, I don't think of the Kingman Regional Nine Eleven Center as part of fire. I think of it as what it says, which is a regional nine-one-one center that they manage and manage well. There's a five point seven percent increase in the budget. And the big story here is they're looking to replace their CAD software. And the idea, and Chief should really talk about this more than me, the, the idea is to get all the public safety entities in the area on the same software.
So, so this has actually been an effort of a couple of years and a combined effort between us and police. For the simple fact, it's under my budget because I could make a joke right now, but I'm not. I'm very serious, very dialed in. But no, it's a joint venture in that our CAD platform that we have right now, it's called New World. New World is, we use an older version. This actually saves us a lot of money in a short amount of time by doing that. We would have to upgrade our current CAD system for it and GIS and some of our other interfaces to actually talk. And so we're just limited in capabilities. And so by going to what we, what's called Capers is the brand name of CAD, it actually puts us on a new platform, everything talks the way it's supposed to. The police will get a new records management system, which is a, a huge benefit to this because that tied in with the CAD, tied in with Bullhead's CAD, which is the same, puts the sharing of information across all spectrums in a, in a tremendous benefit for everyone. So alerts and warrants and all those things that, that happened in that world is one system. And then MCSO and Havasu are the other two major players are looking at doing the same thing. Havasu has a little different budget constraint over there with their spending limitation. So they're, they're waiting on some votes this year that, that will impact them. And quite frankly, just some of the county budgeting is, is holding them back a little bit. But it's a tremendous effort and saves a lot, a lot of money, lot of money.
Chief, will that provide mapping in the
Yeah, it will. So we have mapping now, and one of the, one of the issues we have, when a few years back So, we have mapping now, and one of the issues we have, a few years back, whenever police and fire went to mobile data terminals or computers in their vehicles, one aspect of that is information's provided in the car as they're driving. In our case, our captain looks at that information and it has a map, turn here, turn right, that type of stuff, so you can see where all the hydrants and the different layers of that map are. Due to the connectivity, it has been, it's been a mess. The other unspoken piece of this is the customer service from our current vendor. It's just, it's not the level it should be. And the only solution that we ever hear is, hey, pay a little bit more for this module or upgrade. And neither one of those are real working solutions. It's gotten to the point where it's pretty consensus between us and IT and police, this is the solution by far. But it will take, once if approved, it takes about 12 to 18 months to get us there.
Pass the $30,000 annual maintenance fee, is that the norm?
It's pretty standard, actually lower than most. So, there's some additional bonuses you don't pay for certain upgrades. If you don't want it, you get to select it. With other vendors, you get it whether you want it or not. And if you want a different piece, let's say you want a building inspection or a preplanning module, $13,000, and you can go on and on like this. This, it's all under one umbrella, it'll be in the cloud, which I'm speaking way over my head right, even just mentioning the cloud when I say that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief or myself about the 911 budget? Okay, thank you so much, Chief.
If I might add one thing, I've already, I won't be here doing the capital piece, but I've already got shovels and hard hats for the new Station 2 and the big scissors for cutting, so just when we're ready, I'll schedule it up.
No pressure.
No pressure at all, I got it ready. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Now, we're going to be on page 59.
I saw Jack walking. What are you waiting for, it's Jack, I saw him walking up.
Okay. Bless you, yeah. Here they come.
Okay.
Who?
Driving me crazy.
Still.
Is it Mike's?
Yeah.
And you guys are asking.
It's a big outfit, man.
He's got guns.
All righty. Gentlemen, in front of you are from the Public Works Department, as you know, and the first budget is Public Works Administration. I almost put a slide together to explain Public Works, but I thought I'd just say it rather than use a slide. Public Works in this city is almost like a collection of special and enterprise funds that Rob is in charge of. And so, you know, I'm just looking at the three people on either side of Rob, and every one of them has a fund that they're responsible for. And so, the challenge in Public Works Administration is try to make sense of all those activities and all those separate funding sources and come up with a comprehensive Public Works program. The administration budget has an increase in it of $20,000 for traffic engineering, warrant studies, appraisals, and architectural design. And they also have increased their training budget by $5,500. And public education supplies is a new line item for them. And the idea is to be able to have a stronger presence in the community in terms of public education. I think, I think you'll see another thematic in the next six months to a year where public education efforts and community affairs activities will be much more integrated. And so, we just included some dollars for them to be able to do that. The amount of money for this administration budget, as you can tell, is about $400,000 to $40,000. Pretty straightforward, it's the, I call it the glue that keeps the Public Works divisions together. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them with Rob's help. But to me, it's pretty straightforward and we could move on to the next. I hear silence, so I'll take that as, let's move on.
I would like to say thank you for pumping training up. I think that's kind of been a deficiency from what I've seen maybe in the city, where we need to make sure we train our people.
Thank you. Yeah. One of the things that I didn't mention earlier, and some of you were at the, I call it the Training Day for Boards and Commissions, was it January already? It feels like.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway. And so, some of you were at that event, and one of the things that I said in the closing comments was that I would make sure that every budget had money in it for Boards and Commissions to either go to training or have a seminar brought here. And so, that's happened, that's, probably should have made a bullet point out of that. But every one of the citizen boards and commissions that we have, in the appropriate department, there's a line item for them to be able to do that. Well, let's talk about streets. Jack thinks that this is Public Works, and he doesn't understand why all these other people came to talk about Public Works too. The recommended budget includes $4.5 million for pavement management, 3.1 million of that comes from the recently adopted half a percent increase in the TPT. We talked about this when I was going through the highlights, but it's really important to keep underscoring that this money isn't part of the general fund, this money isn't part of HERF, this is all the 3.1 TPT. And an additional 4.3 million from HERF is available for other repair and maintenance activities. Some of you know people in town who always tell us that there's more money, right? Well, this is that, this is how they get there. They add the two numbers together, they take. Pavement management has become an art form, term, internal to the staff, which you guys have been kind enough to adopt. Because pavement management is about taking care of the streets with life-extending techniques. So, you're going to do things like mill them, you're going to put things on like HA5, you're going to, you know, all the stuff Jack's told you about. That's pavement management. The rest of this is for things like filling potholes and having the crews out and all that. So, they're two different things. And it's fine with me if somebody wants to add them up and say, well, gosh, you're spending $8.8 million on your streets, yeah? And if we could figure out a way to spend $9.8 million, we'd probably do that too. You know, and so, it's just a big number, but I want you to understand how that's structured. There's a continued emphasis, obviously, on pavement management and street maintenance activities. But that continued emphasis, remember the presentation, we're talking about keeping these levels up for like a decade, is going to cause us to really examine our staffing and capital equipment levels in future years. The thing I just said about fire, well, capital equipment for streets out there too, in terms of, depending on what you're buying. And so, to the department's credit, they tried to be cautious this year about how much money was going to be requested, therefore ultimately recommended for staffing and/or capital equipment. But if Public Works is able to sustain these levels, four and a half, four and a half, five million level, Ron and Rob are going to have to look at staffing support and capital equipment. Yeah.
Do we anticipate additional?
We do, but it's not in the budget because I like to count revenues that have happened rather than revenues that are promised. There was a bill that we talked about in the opening, that the governor signed a couple of weeks ago that will theoretically free up the Department of Public Safety financing from HERF and allow HERF, those HERF dollars to be reallocated. Statewide, that's just a little north of $100 million, and it's a mid-year initiation, it starts like January of 2019. So, we didn't, we being Tina, did not put any in the HERF revenue line for that legislative change. And so, by budget prep time here from now, they'll have a good idea about whether that's a real number or a wrong. So, if that money, any money that comes in as a result of that, will go into the HERF fund. And so, you can still, but we didn't do anything with revenue numbers for that. But it would be used, it would be used for repair or theoretically you could add it to the, yeah, your choice, you have discretion on that. Travis?
You know, I'm sure there's a lot of examples throughout the budget book, I know there are, but when I look at the highlights in the comments, I think the city needs to find a way to take all of those and put them out in a better public information campaign. I appreciate your comments about making that a priority because the citizens that we represent, they know, they're not going to flip to page 63 to read it.
And then, the other big change here, and this was probably the most drawn-out discussion between the operating department, the finance department, and the city manager of anything I did in my five months here, and that was to treat the pavement management program essentially as an operating expense. And so, that's why the numbers look strange to you because historically, they were treated as capital. I, again on this view, as all of you know, I think that pavement management is essentially an operating expense. As I said earlier, stuff wears out. And so, I get the distinction between the two-inch lift or more as being capital. Say fine for that, but everything else in pavement is an operating expense, and so that's why it's set up the way it's set up. And I want to skip down to, the land and buildings at Public Works were purchased from ADOT in 2007, and it was a 10-year lease purchase deal. And those were paid off this year, and so, you, payments, so the budget goes up. We've had Jack in front of you so many times that he's lost track of how many, to go through the street program and what streets are going to be done when. The only thing I would say about streets is that, really, two things. The first one is that we're actively working to implement the program for this year now. Stockton Hill will start, help me, Jack, two weeks from now.
Uh, yeah, so Stockton Hill, we have a start date, first week of June.
June.
On that, we'll have some other miscellaneous stuff going around for the project that we have slated for this fiscal year. And we'll have that all completed by the end of June for that project, and then we'll have the next phase.
And then, as soon as the budget is adopted, it'll be right behind that with the programming for fiscal 18, 19. So, all during the summertime, you'll be seeing 18, 19 work being done. And to an earlier question, we programmed every dollar of the expected half a percent for pavement management. Really all I've got to say about streets, because we've spent a lot of airtime on that the last couple of months, so I appreciate the work that Jack and his team have done on this. This is one of those budget priorities that was ranked as in need, and staff gets that. It just happens to be that this is one that you solve with money, and you guys have been good enough to make that possible. So, we'll try to show our appreciation for that by aggressive implementing. Any other questions about streets? You were eloquent today, Jack, thank you very much.
That was easy. That was easy. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Are you staying to watch or are you?
No, I've got roads to go fix.
Okay.
All right, guys, thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you, Jack. All right. Next up is CART. And this is, this is actually a shop that needs a work session, in my opinion. I've been here five months, and the only time I see CART people is budget season time, right? Or maybe once or twice I've had questions, but I really think that as you program your work sessions in balance of 2018, that having them come and do a presentation would be a good idea. Explains routes, they have, as part of this, the financials for CART, a study over where they could do route expansion. So, you've got to, you know, you've got to at least A, know there's a study, and B, what kind of route expansion they're looking at. You get to pay, I mean, I just think there's, how the program works, what, you know, what percentage of the program is underwritten by fares and what percentage is picked up elsewhere and, I mean, I just think there are lots and lots of productive minutes that you could spend with CART. And I apologize for not having you on the calendar the last five months of my life to let that happen. Well, the budget highlight says it all, it's pretty straightforward. This is going to, to me, this is a maintenance of effort budget for CART. And if you have questions for them or me, I'd be glad to answer, try to.
We had a discussion recently about whether or not this budget would allow for another route. As we talked about to the industrial park.
Sure. So, one of the routes that I am told that the study will identify for consideration among the expansion candidates is a bus route out to the industrial park slash airport. It's my understanding you had one once and it is discontinued, right?
Yes, many years ago, more near the beginning of.
You're going to need to be closer to a microphone, my friend.
Let me move over here. I'll move over to Jack's spot. Thank you, yes. Many years ago, in the, when CART first started, they did try a bus route out to the airport. airport and it just, it wasn't utilized, it wasn't used. But I think that, I think that we're at the point where we really want to be looking at a way to get transportation out to the airport. I think that that would be beneficial and that's one of the things that we want the study to look at. Can I ask a follow-up on that?
I think it's going to be the same as mine, but go ahead. So, so that, that's confirmation that it's part of the routes that they're evaluating. I spoke with Rob recently and I asked him to develop the costs, to try a once in the morning, once in the afternoon expansion that we just do and presuming that the numbers are manageable, that it would be underwritten with city dollars as an experiment while they're doing their study. And it's a, it's a theme that's been used a lot over the last year, which is called, let's go collect some data and find out. And so, that's in process right now.
Thank you.
If it doesn't happen by Tuesday night, then this gentleman will deal with it on Wednesday, but that's, that's the interim strategy to the study. You should know that.
I'm hoping that that.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
What's the, about what's the timing approximately to try that route? Is it months away, days away, weeks away?
Weeks, days to weeks.
Thank you.
I'm hoping that that study looks at our current routes as well because I know that the yellow route, for instance, goes into a lot of the county area and I don't think that the county is really contributing anything monetarily to the system.
That's correct.
So, so, I mean, it's kind of a tough situation, but I mean, we need to worry about the places that the city has media control thing first.
Yeah.
The other thing that I would, I would ask about is it looks like marketing and advertising, advertising and promotions has been $1,500 a year and then it's getting kicked up to $2,500 a year. And, and the program, I don't think will be successful unless people know about it.
Right.
So, is that enough money?
No.
To promote and market this transit system for our city? I don't think it's enough.
No, I don't think it is either. I agree with you. I, I just, but I, I would like us to get, the reason I was okay with doing it this way, A, it's more, right? I mean, we've got the vector in the right direction and B is I wanted the route expansion analysis done before we did a lot more work.
And promoting?
On the promotion, yeah. I wanted to, I wanted us to, I wanted us to be able to say, these are the routes, go, you know, and then go from there. But I, I think the number that they'll wind up with will be greater than $2,500 a year to promote transit. I mean, I, I actually have experience running a small transit operation.
Of course.
Of course, right? And, and you just, you just, the kinds of promotion you need to do is, is a lot more than 1,500 bucks for sure and, and I think it'll be more than 25. But I want us to, I want us to make sure we know what routes we want to do before we really get into it.
Appreciate it, yeah. $2,500 doesn't buy, buy much.
Jen?
So, I assume these routes are tied in with the shift changes in the industrial park?
Not at this time. They're, we're still in the study process. These routes would be tied in with the shift changes, yes, whatever we are able to add in.
Did I understand you're going to start this in the next weeks or?
There's a fan right over.
Are you going to start this in the next few weeks or?
We're not, we're not prepared to start this in the next few weeks for stash, for staffing reasons as far as to begin the actual transportation, but definitely in, for the studies and figuring out tying in.
We're, we're talking about two different things, I think.
Okay. I'm just talking right now about the industrial park expansion to that.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Okay. When I answered weeks a minute ago, it's to find out what kind of money we're talking about. And I'm presuming that we can make that affordable to the city because we're the ones that's going to have to underwrite that. And so, once the, that decision's made, say yes, then as soon as they can get the staffing put together, then away we go. Study about all the routes that we've been talking about, separate topic, that to me goes way longer than that. And that's, that's why I want, that's, that's why I talked to Rob about getting going on, on the demonstration route to the airport ahead of it. And I stand by what I said about two weeks.
Okay, so the demonstration route will then be marketed to all of the employers out there?
I see this as a KAMA special.
A KAMA special, thank you.
Okay. Vicki?
I would agree that the priority is within the city for transportation. I do just want to make a comment that one of the routes outside the city limits is to the food bank.
Yeah. No, no, I didn't mean it in any bad way, just that I would say that transit is, it's, I mean, there's a lot of benefits that go along with being a citizen of the city. I may have to worry about those citizens.
So, to underscore that observation about the food bank, at this point, so is the airport. Right? So, that goes to, I mean, I, I think we need to look at what routes we want to have. That's, you know, that's why, and so that's why I'm supportive of the study, right? But, and maybe it's because I'm, I'm caught up with the success we've had the last week at the airport. But I just, I just think it's worth doing a demonstration at the airport to see if that works because as you just heard, when we tried it before, it didn't. And so, I mean, I just think for a lot of reasons, times are different. And, and so, I'm willing to recommend that we use city money to find out if it works.
And that $2,500, is that going to be used to market that? How are people going to know about it?
Well, my, this will wind up falling on, on Ron and Gary's, Gary Kellogg's shoulders more than mine, but my premise was it was going to primarily be marketed through KAMA. We might, that marketing, part of this demonstration. To me, this is a classic transit route expansion where you have a concentration of employment places and hopefully, this is the big unknown, that's why I want to get to work. You, you hopefully have a concentration of originations, right? So that you can, you can get enough traffic to make the route work out. And so, to me, long story short, I was, I was planning on relying on KAMA, assuming that Rob told me the numbers were feasible. I was planning to rely on KAMA to, to spread the word to their employees, to the various employers of the airport.
Might I also suggest the temporary employment agencies in town? I know that has been their biggest obstacle in connecting people to jobs is transportation.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else about our little CART system? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So, I assume you're going to be the, the department spokesman for water because?
Yes, sir.
You're here and George isn't, right? Okay. The, actually, the first thing I would want you to know is that earlier this week, Rob and I were advised by George that he will be retiring shortly into the new fiscal year. So, Rob and I are going to do the water budget. The, the first one is that they're going to conduct meter testing and calibration, a meter testing and calibration project, identify and prioritize meter replacement to address system water loss. We had a presentation earlier this year about system loss. And it's, it's something that needs to be addressed, obviously. It's either water loss, which is where the staff has kind of gotten to, or it's the meters themselves, or it's both, which frankly has been my experience with water systems that run that kind of a variance, that it's not just one, it's both. And so, so I, this is an important activity. And.
If I could, Jim, I just, we, the City of King was one of six utilities statewide that was chosen for a pilot program through the Department of Water Resources. They brought in a consultant that specialized in water loss audits utilizing some American Waterworks Association methodologies. And so, we went through that program. This was their number one recommendation for us on how to attack our water.
I, thank you for that, Rob. I guess, you know, the, my parting observation about it is whatever we conclude, that really needs to be acted on. We spent a lot of time talking about water and, and I don't want to go over that four or five sessions of stuff, but it is, I've, I've seen communities, mostly called city councils, react in two different ways. You know, they either take that information and go, oh, that's interesting, and five, six years later, they've got it, they've done it again and said, well, that's still interesting. Or they attack it the way that you guys have. I would urge you to do the same. The, the, the equipping of well 10 to provide additional capacity and term that Public Works uses is resiliency to our water supply, which essentially means that it, it doesn't have to rely on just one source. That's the way I would translate resiliency. They, they have a different notion, okay? And then the rehab of the main water storage tank to continue to provide, provide upgrades in their infrastructure and their equipment, update the emergency operation plan, and work on certifications. State for both water and wastewater have certification programs that employees have to complete. And, and then, the last one I want to talk about is the last item here and that's, you wouldn't think that Public Works would be a place where we're having difficulty hiring people, but we're starting to see that we're having difficulty hiring people. And frankly, I'm not sure about the whys on this one. My friend, the AC unit came back, I can, so thank. When we were talking about police and, when we were talking about police and fire, I, I have a pretty high level of confidence that they explain what I think is going on there. I don't have the same level of confidence when it comes to Public Works. I just know that we have an emerging challenge about our ability to fill and it's not just in water, it's starting to be across the board. And, and so, earlier I talked about the peered labor market. So, I'm not, I'm not sure how that applies to these guys. I'm not sure if that's, the people that they want to attract to the city in water and wastewater have employment opportunities in other industries and they go there instead just because they like that industry better than city weighted water or wastewater? I'm not sure if it's, they think the compensation's better and so they go there instead of here. I'm not sure if it's because once they get here, they think they'll never get a raise again. You get, right? I mean, it's, can't tell you what's going on, but I can tell you something's going on in the Public Works Department's ability to hire people. And, and so, it's not just the police department that has under, in terms of budgeted versus action, all I really have to say about water operations. The, the budget is essentially $5 million, $5,097,000. It's one of the divisions in Public Works that's like a company. It's got, that's why, why we call it an enterprise fund because it operates like it should, essentially like a business. It's, lives and dies off of its rates and so if there, if there's something wrong with the rate structure, then it'll ultimately take its toll in water. We have, you might recall from reading the, the transmitter letter, we haven't done anything with the rates beyond currently approved. So, you had a presentation about water rates a month ago now, it feels like, and have another one Tuesday night about wastewater. And so, those, those reports haven't been factored into this budget on the revenue side. So, you should know that. And that's really all I have to say about water at this point, other than I would take questions from you, Mayor.
Yes, it's kind of a go-back. I apologize. I'm looking as we go through, each department has anticipated increase in fuel costs.
Yeah.
And I'm curious as to what the formula used was because for the water department, it's $13,000, for CART, it's $2,000, for KPD, it's $9,500. That seems rather arbitrary, so if you could kindly point out what, what I'm not seeing.
Do you think that these departments, departments put those together based on what they felt they were using, so we were not?
Yeah, I think there are different operational characteristics. A lot of the water department, a lot of the well sites are pretty far out of town.
Okay.
So, they're, they're driving out in the desert a lot to well sites or pump sites and.
Thank you, that's helpful.
The service area, you know, the service area covers almost 50,000 people, so it's a bigger service area than like some of the other divisions.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll a question to that. How does the city buy fuel? Is it centralized or is it department by department?
At the fuel pumps, where we buy it.
By bulk?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All aggregated?
Yeah. And then, and then it's CART system, right?
Yes, and then we allocate on a monthly basis. That's correct.
And then there's, we don't talk about.
We're getting the best price again.
Right. Any other questions about water? Let's go to wastewater. The wastewater division is another business model, companion. And they have been working to decrease their energy costs in, in this division. And so, the 19 budget recommendation decreases that by 50 grand. And the, the increase in operating supplies is to equip a utility truck for treatment and another one for collections. The division is part of that 10-year plan I just talked about where ADOT did a lease purchase with us and so that's over and that reduced the budget by 61,000 in addition. And that, uh, reduced the, the budget by 61,000 in addition. Capital, uh, has some big projects. We'll talk about that tomorrow when we're doing the capital budget, but I, the budget for, dollar-wise, is, uh, 3.2 million, almost 3.3, off of a base of 2.9. Pretty, to me, it's pretty straightforward. Lot of money, wastewater and water, uh, program every year. But, the, they both operate with plans, they both operate off fees. Uh, and, and the area to me is pretty straightforward. So, big questions, Jim?
The pre-treatment inspector. It looks like we funded that just a year ago. So is that position filled? And is that program starting to, you know, take, have traction with the users, with the, the industries and their visiting?
That, that's correct, Vice Mayor Miles. Um, we, we had to, for lack of a better term, bank some money for, um, for some other salary needs. So we just recently filled that pre-treatment inspector position. Now, with that being said, um, certainly don't want you to think that the program hasn't been off and running. It has been. It's just been at a reduced staffing level. In other words, we have a shared employee, um, with the water department who, her and myself have traditionally, or up to this point, um, taken on those, uh, those duties. So this will be in addition to that. And that, um, was recommended based off Brown and Caldwell's, um, study, which initiated the pre-treatment program when we built the Hilltop Treatment Facility back in 2011.
That's great. That, the, do you find that the, um, the industries you visit, is, are they just voluntarily complying? Or are these, uh, these regulatory things that you are working with them on?
So, obviously, you know, it's, um, it's ongoing or continuing and it does, um, present, you know, its own challenges. But, um, we always take the approach that education, um, with those industrial users, um, certainly goes a long way. And, and at least to this point, I think we've been relatively successful in that approach.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You just dawned on me. We're, we're three hours and change into this and I haven't been introducing the staff because I assume you know everybody. That's Kealan Yarborough who runs wastewater. Any other questions about wastewater? Eloquent as always, Mr. Yarborough. I've, I've talked about this fund several times this morning and I've, I've seen individual members over the last couple of weeks, I've given you my $299 set grant about, about this It's been a really, really long time since the city looked at this fund from a revenue rate study perspective. Several years ago, you looked at the fund from a rate perspective, but not a revenue perspective, which, which means you changed who paid, but you didn't change the amount of money. So it's been more than a decade since you looked at the amount of revenue it takes to run sanitation. For the last few years, it is really clear that the way that we've made the fund work financially is to balance it on the question of how many packers we're going to put in the budget against the fund balance. Well, this year, the answer is none, as we are at the 90-day reserve requirement. And so, the first bullet point about the 50,000 included in the budget to a revenue rate study, not just a nice idea, it's an absolute requirement for this fund to go forward. In my view, the next sentence, obvious. It, it just looks harsh when you put it up on the screen like this. But when you can't generate enough revenue to pay for replacement equipment, I would say that means it's no longer able to support this current effort. There's an increase in other contract services that goes to the cost of disposing recyclables. And, uh, the, that's for the containers. The recommended budget assumes the pilot project will be suspended until the revenue rate study is completed or a contingency fund transfer is made to expand the program. But what I mean by that is that, euphemistically, I'd say it's the staff view, but it's, it's interim city manager. That we have sufficient data on the pilot project to make a decision about whether we want to expand recycling. And so, if that's the council's decision to expand that, then that ought to get factored in to the rate base. Because that's, that's got a different cost structure to it than what we traditionally do. And so, that's all I mean by that. That's, that shouldn't be read to say that we, we, the staff, don't want to do recycling. It says, it should be taken to be, we, the staff, want recycling program to be done in a much more comprehensive way and have it funded. so when you do the rate study, the revenue slash rate study, this is going to be a place where Ron and Rob are, are going to engage this council for sure and maybe the community broadly. How you want to provide these services? If you want to provide recycling, curbside recycling, as well as trash collection? Do you want to do it on the model that we use, which is once a week for trash, once a week recycling? Do you want to do something different? If so, what? No idea what that "what" is, but, you know, you need to know that. I'd go so far as to say you need to think about whether you want to do it privately or whether you want to continue with public. I think I've been responsible for managing, um, trash and recycling in every conceivable way, non-demand, uh, over my career. City does it all, but where the city has nothing to do with it. And everything in between. So there are lots and lots of areas about how you do it. And, and that needs to, that needs, that conversation needs to happen, either in advance of or concurrently with the revenue rate study. But you, you can't, can't walk out of this year's budget process and think the sanitation fund's in, in a good place. And, and you, and you can't walk away from the budget process this year and think that we don't have to address these fundamental service questions about recycling and how that fits in, because both of those statements are true.
Question. There's a study programmed in. Can you test upon my questions? Are there other Arizona cities that have looked at privatizing the city-run service like sanitation? And that typically, that decision come from a study? Or how is that determination typically made? How would the city of Kingman weigh all of its options in a methodical, data-driven way? Make a decision?
So, um, yes. This is a short answer to your question about, do you have other Arizona cities done this? In, in Paradise Valley, it was all private, but it was multiple private. And all the city did was regulate the private fund. So, Waste Management and Republic were both in town. Paid an annual fee to the city to operate, and then they went out and got their customers. And the city had minimum requirements. Had to have once a week pickup, get the pick, right? But after, after, and that was part of the, that was part of the annual fee process, is to certify that they were going to provide at least a minimum. And then they had a menu. You could get twice a week curbside, twice a week at your garage, twice a week, you get the, once a week in a, in those. I've had a nickname for it, but it meant bag service. So, so that was, that's minimum, right? Another smaller community, um, just to the east of them, Fountain Hills, went to doing it privately, but they did it as an RFP process. And everybody who wanted to provide that service, you know, they had, the, the, the council figured out, and the staff figured out what services they wanted to provide. And then they, they sent that out as an RFP request. And then they evaluated which ones met it, which respondent met it best. And then the city council awarded that firm the business citywide. So the city, city was not involved at all. There are other cities, I understand, and I don't know as much about them, that try to do it on a hybrid basis, where the city does some of it and the private contractors do other parts. But I, I defer to the staff to, to find those and explain those to you. So, so like I said, the short answer to your question, Travis, is yes, there are, uh, cities in Arizona that use private. And they have that whole range.
Well, it's a tough conversation, you know, but at the end of the day, it's a business and you have to, you have to give the best deal that you can to the citizens that we represent. So I don't know how we start that whole process of looking at it.
Well, so, um, I said at the very outset that one of the things about this budget that was different is I was the guy who made the recommendations and Ron was the guy who had to implement them. Right? And so, if this budget is adopted and he sees that there's a, a revenue rate study, I know Ron well enough, after the five or six weeks we've been talking, to tell you that he's going to, he's going to start by asking his council what your interest is on scope of service. He just nodded his head, see? Shows that we've been talking about stuff, right? So, so that's where it starts and it starts, it starts in a, in a work session, folks. Real honest. And, um, and when you're having that work session, it, it could be as simple as what are you open to? Right? I mean, there's no point in having Ron and, and his staff go out and, and work on an option that you have no interest in. But if you, you know, I, I think, I think, having worked with you for five months, you guys are very comfortable and very capable of saying, you know, Ron, we want you and your team to look at whatever that list looks like. And he says, got it. And away you go. And the, and the obvious reason that he's, he's going to do that with you is because he can't do the revenue rate study until he knows what it services and therefore what cost he's got to recover. So, you guys are looking at me like, no. But, you know, but that's, as I, I said five minutes ago, this, this fund can't continue the way it is. You know, you have, you have taken all of the, well, let's do it another year, out of the equation. And Jamie and I had a, a conversation two hours ago about looking forward. Well, this one's easy because you have no chance, you have no choice to look backwards. You know, you got to look ahead to see what's going on. And, uh, and then, I, I didn't bring it with me, but I asked Rob and Eddie to, to give me a schedule of their, uh, packers. And, and those things, and literally, they go back, they're like 20 years. You know, the equipment's not in great shape. And I'm not blaming Eddie and I'm not blaming Scott Yolken for not fixing it. It's just, when you're balancing, when you're balancing a fund based on how many pieces of replacement equipment you can afford this year, and the number keeps shrinking, in police work, that's called a clue. You know? And, and we, we have hit that point where there is no ability to replace the fleet. And I don't want to be the city manager and Ron doesn't want to be the city manager and Rob doesn't want to be the public works director and Eddie doesn't want to be the sanitation guy who says, I'm sorry, we can't pick up any, any trash today because all of our trucks are down. And that's, that's the environment you're in.
How much does a garbage truck cost?
A little over a quarter of a million dollars.
Per each?
How many of those do we have?
20.
We have 20?
We got some backups as well, but yeah, so.
20 plus the backups and a quarter a million.
Are they in varying stages of disrepair?
Uh, well, within the last 10 years, they probably, we've probably got one every other year. Maybe some years, we've got a couple. Again, like city manager said, it's just based on what our budget was. Uh, but yes, again, we have some trucks that are the 20-year age that we still keep around just for backups, because if we have a truck that goes down, you could have it down a couple of days because you're waiting for freight to get parts in, uh, so.
Average, they, average age of the fleet's probably north of 10 years.
But knock on wood, to this day, we're still picking it up within reason on a timely manner. Some days might be longer than others, but we've never had to go to a homeowner and say, well, you know, the average routes between 800 and 1,200 cans, we haven't had to go onto them and say, hey, we're not picking you up today. We've just had to double up on routes. When that truck got done, we just sent it somewhere else.
Can I just say something about that? I really appreciate the job Eddie does, sanitation division. It's the, in terms of customer service, there's, and I've been doing this for a lot of years, nobody can touch his customer service feedback. Nobody. Right? Hands down. Great stuff. What you just heard him say, right? About, you know, we keep trying? That's what lets councils think that it's okay to push it another year.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because they know he's going to try. And he's going to keep trying for the rest of this year and all of next year, right up until the place where we haven't put any money into the system to replace the equipment and he has no choice but to cut routes back and slow up the, you get the, I mean, it, it's just, it's a, it's a, uh, it's a real insight into the positive attitude the staff has about making things work and why in the long term, you hit walls that need really significant attention. Go ahead, Jim.
Normally, um, how long would you let a trash truck go? How many years or how many miles until you'd replace it? If you're on a good system of, you know, replacing them?
Typically, typically, the city of Phoenix, they rotate theirs out every eight years.
Eight years. Okay, and our average is about 10 years old is the average?
And plus.
So we're not that, we're not that far away.
No, you just don't have any money to replace it.
Right. But I mean, yes.
Yeah.
So we're essentially subsidizing service at this time. Would you say that?
Yeah, actually, exactly what you're doing.
Before we move on, can I ask another question? It goes back to, I, I don't like line item budgets.
That's all right.
So, I mentioned that the fuel increase seems to be rather arbitrary, looking at the various departments. Then we get to sanitation- Then we get to sanitation, which assumably is the largest user of fuel. And a cost of a gallon of gasoline is the same regardless, regardless of what vehicle it goes into. So sanitation department has projected no increase in fuel expenses. So my question is, could we not or should we not look at a more uniform approach to estimating fuel cost increases as, I mean, if you listen to the news, it's in the news every day that this is coming. And I just want to make sure that, that we take care of that looking ahead, that that's covered. Is that a reasonable request?
Talk to the council about how your vehicles are powered, Eddie?
Well, I think when, when we started this budget process, this is obviously before fuel prices started going up, but I, we thought we were gonna fall below our projection. And then, you know, we figured that that dollar amount was adequate for this up and coming year. There's a little bit of cushion in there, but we just figured, you know, uh, that would be sufficient at this particular point.
Thank you.
Any other questions about sanitation?
I did have one question. It kind of goes back to the last couple. Yes, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but is there anything respective over time? I understand, you know, respective fires.
Right.
Pay overtime for these different departments? Would it be better to allocate those monies towards getting a new employee? Or anything like that, or have you looked into that at all?
Well, I guess I, I just say that the overtime and sanitation is related to generally commercial accounts to pay for additional pickups. So there are accounts that we pick up six days a week, um, and also to service the recycling drop-off centers. And we try to keep those picked up so that we don't end up with people piling materials out there next to full.
And another big line item for that too is, uh, the holidays. Cause you know, if, uh, the day after Thanksgiving, you know, we all have it off, but to meet our mandate, we still have to provide trash service. So, you know, that's a big chunk, chunk of change when you have 18 employees coming in on that day. On the days that if the landfill's open on a holiday, we will run, even though the city's off, we will run commercial only because, you know, they're paying a base rate, they're getting six days a week, we still have to pick them up six days a week. So there's, a lot of that is just, uh, I'm not so sure. I'd love to have another person, you know, we, again, we were trying to balance, you know, but you want to all give me another guy, I'd be more than happy to take it. But yeah, that's, that overtime there is, like Rob said, a lot of it's, uh, weekend work and, uh, holiday overtimes.
Kids you have to pay, um, you have those commercial, uh, even if we were to, I mean, you'd still need overtime for those.
Right.
So that explains why we didn't deal with OT in this particular division. I, I do want to come back to the mayor's point about the calculation on fuel costs. One of the, one of the challenges that you face with budget reviews all the time is the difference between the budget and the actual. And so sanitation is an example where we thought that the actual for this fiscal year was gonna be below the number, so we applied, leaving the budget team, applied an inflator against the actual and said, ah, that'll work out. So that year. I should have done a section on this probably. What we're trying to do is shrink the number of variances in the budget.
That's what I'm asking for, thank you.
Right? And so when I talked about the revenues being up four and a half percent budget to budget, but if you look at it where we think they're gonna be year-to-date to, uh, the recommended number, it's 2.75. We, Tina, Leslie and myself went through the budget on a, on both sides of the ledger trying to find places where we could get that variance to be smaller by paying attention to what the actual history had been. And so, um, in, in the case of sanitation fuel, that's one of them, where we thought that the actual fuel cost for current fiscal year was gonna be less.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on sanitation before we say thank you, Eddie? And I meant what I said. You guys, you guys do a great job for the citizens of this city.
Thank you.
They tell you that hopefully a lot. Thank you. Fleet. This is a, uh, this is page 84 to 87. This is, this is, I already said this, but this is almost like a corollary to Dave's points about overtime versus positions. This is called if the fleet weren't old, he wouldn't have these costs. I mean, this is, truth is a defense, right? So it's just, uh, that's really what this budget's about. The, uh, the increase that's anticipated in tires and parts is three to seven percent, depending on what you're talking about. And then as I just said, the increased cost to maintain an aging fleet. In capital outlay, they, they want to install, uh, new mobile lifts so that they can work on this equipment better. And, uh, something that, uh, was talked about earlier this morning, the fuel tanks at Public Works need to be replaced at a cost of $600,000. This is a, an important project for a number of reasons, one of which is risk management is dealing with an insurance company that doesn't. We ought to keep the current tanks in the ground and they need to be replaced. This is underground storage, fuel storage issue. And so, um, I still like, I haven't talked to Ron about this, uh, but I still like the idea of central fuel, uh, for a whole host of reasons, uh, but it, it comes with some costs over and above whatever the wholesale cost of fuel is, and this is one of those costs, so.
Is it possible, or have we looked at partnering with the county on this? Because their fuel station is just right across Route 66.
Yeah, I don't know, that's a great question, Rob.
And save money?
Yeah, we have talked to the, to the county and also the school district. Um, the county has several different smaller fueling facilities. If you notice the one that's over there off of Sunshine, um, it's, it's not very busy. They don't fuel, they have a separate fueling facility for their heavy equipment. And then they have other fuel facilities throughout the county. I don't know that that one that's on Sunshine could accommodate, we don't think that one could accommodate us with our heavy equipment. We also talked to the school district. They are on a contract with the supplier that's, um, off of Andy Devine, back behind Tucker. There's a, a fueling supplier there. Again, with the number of buses that are fueling there, I just don't know that it would be logistically possible for us to run all of our heavy equipment over there, just the regular fleet. Cause that was, you know, that was something we were hoping would be more promising. It doesn't appear to be. So with the new fuel station or with the new fueling facility, these will be above-ground tanks and they'll have all the proper containment built in with them. One thing that may affect us though is they're probably gonna be smaller capacity than what our existing underground tanks are, which may affect the price we're getting. Kind of a larger bulk supplier or provider now may affect the price that we get. That's all things that we'll have to work through.
I, I didn't see if Ron made a note before he left on this item, but I personally, if I were there instead of here checking with the county to see if there's an interest, either closing down there isn't coming over or having us partner up there, it was a conversation.
Right, this, I mean, that's a really big, you know, and that's really expensive, $600,000. There's a way to get around that. You know, um, you know, our company, we have a very small fleet, very small. We use that same fueling station on Tucker and Andy Devine and, and have saved a lot of money that way. So I just wonder if maybe then there isn't an opportunity for the schools and the county and the city to have their own much bigger fueling station and maybe we plan to spend $300,000 and build it and.
When he's back, I'll make sure that's on Ron's list of things.
Maybe he's out there making that call right now.
Maybe he is.
Pretty sure that's not the case, but that's, uh, nice to be the thing.
Can I ask a question along those same lines? Kind of a follow-up. Is this $600,000, does that also include, um, what do we do with the existing underground tank?
That's what this is.
It includes that as well?
That would include the remediation.
Okay, cause that's an issue, isn't it?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Travis.
No, just to emphasize Jamie's point, you know, the financial realities that the city's facing, it forces us to have to look at regional solutions and, and privatization sometimes maybe and innovative outside the box stuff. Cause we, you know, you made a comment, um, at a council meeting one time where pavement doesn't care if you're a poor community or what your revenues look like. Pavement does what pavement does and it ages. Same with everything else we're dealing with, you know?
Yeah, there's a, uh, a, a city manager in this state who, uh, was in an interim situation, which he intended to leave, uh, and before he could leave, city hall burned down.
I remember that.
Yeah. And, and he, uh, he gave a presentation to a local service club, I think, about how that turned into an opportunity to rethink service delivery. And so it was kind of stuff that Jamie said, where you, you're partnering up city and county together to do something, or you put city, county, uh, schools together, you get the fair, I mean, just non-traditional ways to, to do things.
You said it, you nailed it right on the head. Organization-wide, we have to rethink service delivery.
Yeah, while you were out.
And now that city is purchasing, uh, office supplies with the county, they're, they're making a lot of joint purchases and saving a lot of money.
So that's fleet. What's the average age of our fleet?
It's probably a little bit newer now. At one time it was 12 years old.
12? And we don't have any sort of vehicle replacement?
No, there are, you know, communities like Tempe, Mesa, they don't keep any vehicles more than seven or eight years. We went for several years where the only vehicles we were buying were cars.
Where it's the same situation there where we're not programming money every, like, six years and you, you take, you fund that over six years and you buy a car in six years. We're not doing that.
You know, I, I've said this like five times in three days, I guess, you know, but one of the really hard ideas to get people to say, oh yeah, I get it, is that capital wears out. People think, you know, they get that operating expenses are expensed, right? You know, like you buy two reams of paper and a week from now, you're gonna need to buy another ream of paper because you used it. And the, the same concept is true with capital. It wears out, but that's harder for people to get their heads around. And so all of a sudden you wind up with aging fleets and aging this and the latest. Yeah, so, um.
Personally, I don't understand why people don't understand that. I mean, how many, how many are driving 25-year-old cars?
See, yeah, that's part of it, frankly.
In their own households.
But they, there's a, I, uh, have four teenage grandchildren who all believe that cars don't wear out. Buy them and figure out who's gonna pay for the insurance and they just keep going. And so it's just, it's a hard, it's a hard concept in my experience to get people to appreciate. So this is building maintenance, page 88. And, um, the, um, trying to think of a way to say this, uh, without making y'all take a recess and let me go out and show you all the stuff I'm proud of in this building. Yeah, I just think it's important that for the people who work in it and for people who come in to do business in it, that a city building looks like people care. And, and so what we did downstairs, excuse me, what we did downstairs is really important to me and I've rubbed most of you through there to say, right Jim? Okay. But I'm here to tell you that we wouldn't have been able to the airport last week. We hadn't practiced on the building downstairs. And so if we can do it for two, we ought to be able to do it for the rest. So that's really what this maintenance budget's about, is to take the same ideas and the same approaches that we used downstairs a couple of months ago, we used last week at the airport and say the rest of the employees matter too. That's, I, I gotta tell you, I, it's been a long time since I got emotional about a building maintenance budget. But I just, you know, I just think it's, I just think it's really to the core about being responsible stewards of public space and the people we hire to perform services. And most importantly, people come in here, get those services or go to a fire station, go to wherever it is. And so that's, that's what's there. And it's, this budget is as philosophically driven as any division that you're gonna look at today or tomorrow. It didn't mean you don't have, you don't get to ask questions. It's just, it's just, like I said, it's philosophically driven.
I think we all appreciate the improvements, right?
I think it's tremendous improvement in assistance for, for morale. I think it was long overdue. Facilities were dated. They need to be contempor, contemporaryized. I was wondering if Mr. Fogg had any thoughts on matter?
Jim captured my thoughts exactly. These are, this is the place that people come to do business with the city. Our employees deserve to have a good, a, a nice place to work. And my feeling is that we need to maintain as new. That's the approach I take.
And I appreciate that you have a whole team of MacGyvers. I mean, what they were able to do, right? In a short period of time with nothing was pretty amazing.
That's actually, I'm glad you said that, Mayor, because that's one of the things I'm really proud of on this stuff, whether it's the airport or downstairs or fire, you name it, is we've contracted close to none of it. It's, it's almost all been force account, which means you use your own employees and build the appropriate apartment. And, um, in fact, we had a little dust-up with the county last week at the airport because we were using our own folks and we needed to make sure we got everything lined up so that it was okay for us to be out there working on our own buildings rather than using contract. That's all taken care of. I just, let me just, don't worry, but it's just a, a whole notion of, of the pride our people have to, to doing things that you saw. The landscaping plan that's downstairs, I wanted to. The landscaping plan that's downstairs, one of, one of your city employees did that. Says, we don't have, we don't have to have a small forest here, you know, so, um, it's a, it's a really meaningful to me to see the employees react, whether they're the people doing the work, the people living in the space, and I have seen firsthand customers coming in saying, wow, this, I like this, this is good. And so, that's all I got to say. The other thing I have to say about where we're at is we're right on schedule with where we wanted to be. Wanted to have you through Public Works today, and so, we'll start tomorrow morning with engineering. Hopefully, the information has made sense, put it out in a way that you could follow it. And hopefully, you found the entry or the introduction useful to kind of frame what we were talking about. Tomorrow's gonna be the support agencies, if you will. We're gonna talk about engineering, we're gonna talk about human resources, the finance. And the capital budget will be probably the most challenging because it's, it's got more moving parts, and you gotta cut at this page after you went to that page, and, and there's not as much of a, of a thematic, if you will, as we have today. So, so that's what's on the calendar tomorrow. And, uh, I appreciate your involvement today and kinds of conversations we had.
Before we adjourn, we already had this discussion. My daughter is graduating tomorrow. I can't be here, I'll be in Tucson. Thank you.
Thank you.
For putting this together.
I just want to quickly, quickly commend Public Works and that team of MacGyvers that is a tremendously talented, skilled resource that will be well utilized in taking care of long-deferred maintenance and stuff at the airport and...
Thank you.
Working their magic like they did downstairs elsewhere throughout the city.
Don't forget Park and Rec in that, too. The, the external stuff was, was the park guys, um, and, but, thank you.
But also, human resources, finance, I mean, all the things that...
We're talking about the airport for a minute. We, we wound up having last week, every department except the clerk's office and legal, or I'm sorry, the court, rather. How could we think that legal didn't have anything to do with it?
Right. And the city attorney.
Judge Singer and Sid were the only two departments that weren't involved out there. All the other 10 departments had some role to play in making the transition, and I'm, I'm extraordinarily proud of them. I, I shared this with a couple of you. Last week, um, my wife finished a class that she'd been taking while we were here, and it was her final. And, uh, this budget was finished and sent out to you, which I consider to be my final with, with the, the city. And the third thing was the airport transition, which to me was the staff final, seeing how that all worked. And, uh, my wife's grades are still coming in. You'll tell me by the end of tomorrow how I did on the, on the budget, but I can tell you, the staff last week on the airport was rock solid across the board and got an A at every juncture that they had a chance to perform. So, I'm, I'm just enormously proud of everybody that was a part of that, both in its planning and its execution, so...
While putting together this budget. I mean, what a week.
Yeah, and a couple other little things along the way, but, uh...
Thanks.
That's why Ron and I do this, because I'd rather do this than have a life, I guess, or...
Well, I can't put my finger on it because I haven't looked at this versus last year's, but this format, I don't know, I just had an easier time. Maybe it's because I've done it, but so many times, but...
No, it's because we, well, thank you.
I really like this format.
Thank you.
And I found it much easier to go through, understand everything, and it was just very well done, so thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. I haven't, I was talking about people I didn't acknowledge. The budget team this year was actually five people. And it's obviously myself, and Tina, Leslie, but we added Jackie because of all the personnel issues that happened to budget. And then, we took the production of the document and took it out of finance and HR and made it part of the manager. So, a lot of this document itself was generated by kid. And so, um, I like that idea of a team. It made us, I think it made us better. We had some issues moving files back and forth, but one of the things that I noticed compared to last year is we standardized all the formatting. That's part of why it's easier to read.
It's much easier to read.
So, you know, you don't have an org chart as conceived by the police chief competing with an org chart as conceived by Mike Mirsmann at Park and Rec, and you get the picture. So, that was, that was one thing. And then, the other goes back to the day we met, which is, in my experience, people want to know in a budget, how much is it, is it up, down, or the same, and what are the big changes? And that's stuff you put in the transmitter letter, and the transmitter letter's in the front, not, you know, page 17 or wherever we had it, right? And so, we, we, we did make an effort to try to have the document become more readable because, as you remember from an early tape, uh, slide this morning, it's a communication tool. If the, if, if the document's illegible to an average reader, you know, who didn't get a degree in accounting, well, then, you probably can't make it a good communication tool. And then, next year, the format will probably change completely, but you'll, you'll see Ron, I believe, emphasize things about plans, outcomes, and performance measures that are absolutely missing in this document. And so, while we, we appreciate your feedback about this is a better document than last year, this is an interim stop to get to a much better document in the future, so... That's all I know. Anybody else have thoughts, comments? We'll see you tomorrow morning. We start at nine o'clock with engineering.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you.